What day is it? The June 27th meeting of the Westford Select Board? We are going to begin our meeting as we always do with a pledge of allegiance today led by the Gummy Bears.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic through which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. So we have a few things tonight for open forum, and the first is to celebrate the Gummy Bears, and we want to celebrate the great work you've been doing. And if you guys have something prepared to help us understand the great work you're doing, we'd love to hear it.
So we are the Gummy Bears. This team's been around for four years. Some of the members have joined two years ago. So and we for each there's a different core values basically means what you need to show in your team to like make it better. And since there were six, since there's six of us, one of our teammates couldn't make it today. But and there are six core values, we are able, we decided to take a core value and remind the team of it.
I'm Mia, the Inclusion Bear.
I'm Allison, the Teamwork Bear.
I'm Marjune, Discovery Bear.
I'm Leo, the Impact Bear.
And I'm Bella, the Fun Bear. And the teammate who isn't here right now is Jayden, the Innovation Bear.
Thank you. Welcome.
Thank you. Talk about the project? So this is our project. It's a droplet-based electricity generator. So there's two devices here that can generate up to 250 volts with one single water droplet for each of them. And what's like really cool about it is that you can stack the devices as shown here to generate as much energy as humanly possible. So this is just a model of it, but you could in real life, you can like continue stacking it to make it generate more energy.
Very cool.
Cool.
Need to send them to the Clean Energy Committee.
Yeah, that's right. Are you interested in joining a town committee on clean energy? We actually have a big history here in Westford, as you probably know, using water power to make things. So this fits right in. Super.
When's the next competition?
So we were in FLL, but now we've aged out of it. So we're going to go to FRC, which is a harder level. And we're gonna, and I don't entirely know when the competition is, but the season, I think, starts in like
January.
Yeah, January.
Oh, that's great. Well, thank you. Do you have anything else you'd like to share with us, or?
Yeah, sure. You know, can Allison, if you talk about the robot?
Oh, yeah. Okay. This is our robot, Boxi. And each year, FLL will publish like a new robot game with more than 15 missions to solve. And each team is like expected to design a robot, like this one's ours, to complete as many missions as possible in two and a half minutes. This robot, we designed by ourselves with some help from like YouTube videos and other stuff, but this is all designed from our brain power. It's a very compact robot shaped like a box. All like motors and wheels are like inside of this area. And it's really powerful to solve missions.
That's great. What are some of the things it can do?
It can do anything a robot basically can do. It can spin. It can go forward. It can go backwards. It also, if you add attachments onto it, it's able to do more things. We didn't bring any attachments today, but some of our example is like there's one where you can place it on. And there's a arm that can lift things up, as well as another arm that's like really flexible and can go like this without a motor. So it's pretty cool. And there's also a jig right here, which is basically to align against something.
Wow. Very impressive.
That is great.
So grateful. Yeah, do you have a question? Sure.
Is there someplace that people in the community could learn more about you? Do you have a website?
Yeah, we have a website. So we have a website. We have a YouTube channel. And actually, this summer, we're running a workshop that we can teach kids aged eight to 12 about this program and teach them a little bit about how to use the robot. So I think that will help them a lot in learning about it.
So the website is like gummybears.wesfordsgummybears.com or something like that?
It's just FLLGummyBears.com, I think.
Say it again?
FLLGummyBear.
Not, not.
Dot com.
You can find out.
It's not dot com. I can send it later.
That'd be great. And if you Google Gummy Bears Westford, I bet it'll come up because that's how I found you.
Yeah, because our recent YouTube video we created just to help the rookie teams get started, that got a small thousand views, just like within like two, three weeks.
Oh, that's great.
It's pretty popular. Yeah. And they are also doing a lot of outreach activities. Maybe you want to talk about that, besides what Mia just said about the workshop. I guess I can start. So basically, over the summer, to promote this program more, we ran this webinar on Zoom to tell people all about this program and teach them how to like, give them advice on each section of it. So we were able to help 35 teams in total from around the world. Two were from Morocco. So yeah, I'm very proud of that. We also mentored two teams this year. One of them, oh, both of them are rookie teams. One of them, we were able to help get into the state's competition for this program, which is a really big feat for a rookie team, because usually they don't get there. It's mostly like the old teams. So we're really proud about that. We helped them a lot during the season. Like we brought them to like places that we visited, like Shell Tech Works, and we invited them to look at how we run our meetings and share our resources with them. And then our second rookie team, we recently went to visit their meeting, and we gave them advice on like how to run it and how to like, I guess, survive the season. So yeah, we really look forward to seeing them compete in future seasons.
Oh, that's terrific. Well, we're very grateful you're able to come. Thank you for sharing with us. Thank you for the parents, for all your hard work supporting this. I'm sure that you, you helped a little bit. And we're very, very happy you're able to join us. So thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you for having us so much.
Yeah.
Good. It's our pleasure. I have one very short thing, and I've asked Scott to, you're all set to go if you guys want to pick up. One short thing I've asked Scott to help us remember, a very special community member who unfortunately has passed recently. But first, Westford Cat wanted to let folks know that there is a new Need to Know Westford podcast. If you go to Westford Cat, there's now a regular podcast series each week highlighting a bunch of interesting issues. I think we interviewed Tim Baker and Patty Mason recently about the Westford Food Bank. And there's great topics every week coming out if you want to learn a little bit more about Westford. And Scott, if you would.
Thanks, Tom. In the pre-done hours of Monday morning, Helena Crocker, who we all know as Mickey, passed away surrounded by family and friends. Westford officially has five villages, but Mickey having eight kids, she gave us a sixth village in formerly Croquerville. And her house actually had a little sign on it. Mickey was living proof that you can be a giant while being small in stature. You can lead by example, not by giving commands. Most of us are very good at finding problems, identifying problems. Mickey created solutions. We say we wanted to make the world a better place. Mickey went out and did it. We all could tell stories about her. I'm going to stick to the town impact, which is huge this evening. Mickey became what we called a town aide in 1966. Her list of accomplishments in 12 years is just amazing. Most of the programs we take for granted today, we owe to Mickey. And at first, when the job, she noticed that there was a lot of towns and senior centers. In fact, every town but Chelmsford and Westford had a senior center. So she organized the first group of seniors to meet on a regular basis. She called them the Golden Ager's Club. They met and borrowed space. In fact, they met on the second floor of Town Hall for the first few years. Eventually, get to the 20 Boston Road, a one-room building. She chaired the committee that is today. Now, the result is the Cameron Senior Center. She organized outings for the Golden Ager's. They went to New York for plays. They went to Atlantic City for fun. They went to Vegas for whatever it was, stayed there. But what we know today is the Council on Aging grew out of those activities. She arranged for weekly shopping bus in the days before we had Uber or even taxis. Today, the Council on Aging runs shuttle vans that take our seniors to medical appointments at Emerson, Lowell General, Neshoba. They take you shopping at various stores around the area. They take you to Littleton, Chelmsford, Concord, Acton, you know, all these various towns with functions. They take you to town meeting. They take you to Market Basket on Tuesdays. And most importantly, to Bingo on Monday and Friday. She was our veterans' agent. Before we had Veterans Service Officers, we had veterans' agent. She would store food in the cupboard of her Town Hall office to create baskets for the needy around the holidays, which early on were veterans that she collected for. This became our food pantry and our thrift shop at the Cameron. Mickey formed a housing needs committee to assist with housing for our low-income residents. Today, that's the Westford Housing Authority, has 100 units of housing in town for seniors and families. If you drive over 110, you see the soon-to-be-completed Helena Crocker residences, which will be giving us more housing for seniors needing assistance to age in place. She began the Bell Oldster Clinic. I love that name, her name. We still provide medical screening and services to our seniors at the Cameron. She brought meals on wheels to Westford. Mickey did this work for elders. She also brought Head Start to Westford. But if you ever told Mickey any of these things, Mickey, you did, she'd say, "Well, it was a team effort, and it's what makes Westford, Westford." Mickey was a devout Catholic. And his chapter on Saint Ignatius, author Matthew Kelly wrote, "The good that we do never dies. It lives on forever in other people, in other places, in other times." It's amazing to remember all the good that Mickey has done for Westford. Our condolences from the Select Board to our family and friends.
Thanks, Scott.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other public forum items today? I'm sorry? Did you want to do the police?
Accreditation.
Did you want to mention the police accreditation?
Oh, okay. I thought you were going to. I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
We'd actually like to congratulate our police department who for the sixth year? For the sixth edition, they have been accredited for the sixth edition by the Police Accreditation Committee. Since the, our police department has participated in this accreditation program, they have always performed and always met the standards and been accredited. And they are one of the few police departments in the Commonwealth that have now been accredited for the sixth edition. So congratulations to our police department and for all of their hard work and for this accreditation, which is just a reflection on just how well they perform and what a great police department Westford is fortunate to have. So I know the chief is in the back there. So Chief, congratulations to your department.
Thank you very much. I know that every member of the police department is very grateful to receive the recognition. It's a, these standards are very rigorous and very demanding to make sure we're meeting best practices. So it really is a full-agency effort. So it takes every single person to buy into the process and the program. So we're very proud. This is our seventh reaccreditation, and they did institute the sixth edition standards right before our assessment, about two months before our assessment. They put out a second version. And I just would like to publicly recognize Captain Jim Pell and his accreditation team, the amount of work that they put into it to make this as seamless as possible. It's just mind-boggling. They did an excellent job. So thank you. And thank you for the recognition. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Thank you, Andrew.
Chief.
Yeah, let's do it. And sir, do you have an item for open forum?
Yes. I'm Anthony DeLeo on Vos Road.
Perfect.
You have a discussion later this afternoon on ballot question number three, and I have some comments. And I don't know whether now's the appropriate time to do it or to wait until later, but.
If you'd like to share your comments now, that's fine.
Okay.
Later on, we're really going to be, just for everyone, we'll be focused on the specifics of what's next to implementation. But I'd be happy to hear your comments now.
Okay. Well, good evening. Hopefully, I can represent the over 1,100 people who voted no on ballot question number three. I would like to spend a few minutes and explain to you why I voted no, okay? And hopefully, provide you with some information that you are probably not aware of, that hopefully you should consider in your deliberations. Ballot question number three, in my opinion, is not like we're trying to fill a vacancy or fill a fiscal appropriation that has a black and white answer. Ballot question number three is initiating a culture change in our community. Ballot question number three is a non-binding question. That means that it's there for guidance. The ultimate decision of how we accept that guidance and what we do with it rests on your shoulders, okay? And from that point of view, I would like to give you, read a comment, a quote from George Orwell, that says, "The most effective way to destroy people is to deny and obliterate their own understanding of their history. All historical events have good and bad associated with them. That's human nature. Hopefully, we can build off of the good and learn from the bad. If either one of those is eliminated from the equation, then we condemn future generations to keep repeating it over and over again, and they are not allowed to progress and develop as a community." We are, we are looking at that possibility here today. We are told that we shouldn't glorify Columbus. I can tell you, as an American, as an Italian-American, there is no glorification of Columbus. We recognize him for the accomplishments that he's made. And you ask, well, what significant contributions did he make? I'll give you one, okay? Within 25 years after Columbus's first voyage, the Crown of Spain had to figure out how to deal with the natives that they were engaged with. They developed and accepted a policy that said, "All men, including the native Indians, should be granted full human rights." Where did you ever hear that before? We look at Columbus, and Columbus Day, rather, as a way of looking at Columbus. But Columbus is not a celebration of Columbus the individual, just like Christmas is not a celebration of Santa Claus. Columbus is a symbol. The initiation of Columbus Day was actually put in place to commemorate the discrimination, the persecution, and murder of Italians in the late 19th century. It was initiated, the discussion on it was initiated, after 11 innocent Italians were hung in New Orleans for a murder that they did not commit. So the question before us tonight is not a question that's written in the ballot. The question before us tonight is whether persecution and discrimination of any one group should supersede that of another group. I think you know the answer to that question, and the answer is that no persecution should be accepted. That's why I oppose ballot question three. In your deliberations tonight, I hope that you will look into your mission statement, which says that you will do what's best for the community of Westford. If you look at this question, the four times that it's been asked, it indicates that the town is divided on this question nearly in half, a few votes one way, a few votes the other way. But what the overwhelming majority of voters in this town have expressed the opinion that they favor both, that they would like both Columbus Day and Indigenous Peoples' Day. We invite you to be bold and not to accept the recommendation as it is currently written, but to look at it from the point of view of providing both opportunities so that we can recognize the sacrifice that was made by both groups and acknowledge the contributions that both groups have made to our culture. This is what I think we are faced with and what I'd like you to consider tonight. This will help unify our community instead of dividing it in half. Thank you.
Okay. Dennis, do you have anything, do you have anything to share? Because we're trying to move into the rest of the time.
The question I have for you is, it's on the agenda.
Could you say your name in your address?
Dennis Galvinadi Conker wrote, "This is on the agenda. Are you opening comments up on it now, or you want to save the comments till it's on time for the agenda?"
I actually hadn't intended to have comments because our, our dressing is pretty narrow, but we do have that very eloquent statement from your colleague, and we also have the notes in the packet. So.
So you're not going to have any conversation on this at all?
I think, I think the ballot question is pretty clear, but we'll get to that when we get to that agenda. I hadn't, I hadn't expected to have open comments. If you have something short you'd like to add that adds new information to what's already been shared?
Well, I just wanted to, just want to add, and I'll go on, go off. The situation with this particular thing was not, never about indigenous people, never about opposing indigenous people. It was about the fact that the, the resolution that was put up, right up front, was basically, in my judgment, an attempt to denigrate American history. All right? Misrepresent it. All right? So number one, right, it had to do with, it used a logic that was basically off, you know, was not acceptable, which you're judging, you know, past events by present standards, right? It divides two people, as my former, as a gentleman before me said. And then it denigrated, it really denigrated in the resolution European settlement. And I just want to say three things about that, and I'm going.
Yeah, quickly, please.
Number one, my grant, my ancestors were European. They came here. They were not coming here to rehab slaves. In fact, they were trying to flee from the same tyrants that were imposing colonization and slavery around the world at the time. They came here with the intention of setting up a country or a society that maybe gave hope to everybody. And I think they did that. And I don't think we need to apologize for that for anybody. So thank you very much.
Okay. Thanks, Dennis. So I see two more people here. If you've got something very brief to add to the conversation, please. But otherwise, the topic before us tonight is really how to move forward with the implementation. So.
This is Kathy Lynch on Rush Road, and this is open forum. I have a brief statement that I'd like to share with you. As much as I would like to think that the Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Committee is what they say they are, I cannot, perhaps the intentions were initially good, but where the committee claims diversity, I see discrimination against half of the Westford voters. I don't see equity. I see inequity. I don't see inclusion. I see exclusion and divisiveness. When Columbus Day had more votes at town meeting than Indigenous Peoples' Day in October 2020, and then the issue was brought to the DEI committee, I thought the DEI committee would work out an equitable recommendation, something like keeping separate day to celebrate each Columbus Day and Indigenous Peoples' Day. That would be fair and equitable. That would show inclusiveness of indigenous peoples, Italians, Catholics, and people who love America and its history, history with its good and bad parts that we all can learn from, while not aiming to repeat the bad parts. Instead, we have a DEI committee that destroyed one holiday for another. In contrast, the Westford Police just had a Faith in Blue event that was a wonderful way to bring the police together with people of faith in a positive, fun activity that was open to the public. That is what Westford needs. And Westford needs a select board that brings people together. If you go along with this agenda to replace Columbus Day, it will show that this elected select board chooses to ignore half the voters of this town. And like the DEI committee is unwilling or incapable of bringing this community together, how will you heal this divide and show us that you believe in bringing all Westford residents together?
Okay. Thank you. This is, this is open forum, so we do want to give people the ability to speak. Please, if it's related to this topic, briefly and only new information that might be of relevance.
I emailed everyone a letter and.
And we received it.
And Kristen's going to put it in the packet for next week.
Okay. Could you, could you please say your name in your address?
I'm sorry. Kathy Creed, 10 Vos Hill Road. So in October 2020, town meeting rejected replacing Columbus Day. And I don't think that that vote should be overturned. I agree that the people in the town want to celebrate both. And I think with so much division in our society, it'd be really wonderful and wise for the select board to do things that will bring people together. So I just have four questions. I don't know how you can answer them, but maybe it's just something that you could think about. Why did the select board choose to keep asking the same question four times? Why didn't the select board consider the first three votes or surveys? And why didn't the select board word the question so that celebrating both was an option? Because that seems to be what most of the town wanted. And what is the select board doing to bring our community together on this issue? Thank you very much.
Gloria Miller, 14 Hutchins Way. I was part of the recount effort on ballot question number three, and I do want to say kudos to the town clerk and all of the staff and the volunteers who ran that process and verified the result. It was a narrow margin, and that is a lesson in the importance of voting. I'd also like to say kudos to all of the young people who voted for the first time. Poll workers reported that they were giving out first-time voter certificates in record numbers. And I think that was due in large part because young people in our community felt strongly about question three, based on the American history that they have studied. Elections have consequences. Recently, a Chelmsford Select Board election was decided by one vote. A few years ago, a Boston City Council election was decided by one vote. Years back, a, the District Three congressional race was decided by a very narrow vote. All of those involved recounts to verify those results. Elections have consequences. Any half-measure result that is adopted by this community disrespects the DEI committee and the work that they were charged to do by town meeting and, which they did with fidelity. It disrespects the town clerk's efforts and all of the volunteers who run our elections, and it disrespects the voters.
Hi.
Hi.
Marcia Young, 26 Acton Road. Maybe I have a different perspective than a lot of people here. I lived out west for a number of years. I actually have friends, personal friends, who are Indians. And I call them Indians because they don't like to be called Native Americans, because that's just another name that white people imposed upon them without their permission. I think that if, has anyone here asked any Indians if they want to have Columbus Day as their day of commemoration? I don't think so. You have?
Ma'am, if you, ma'am, excuse me. If you'd like to share your question or your statement, that's fine. But we're not going to have a dialogue.
All right. Well, my guess is that they wouldn't, that this is an insult to them, that they should have their own day, and we could have Columbus Day and Indigenous Peoples' Day. But to give them Columbus Day is a slap in the face. It's a day that is, is a lot of history and bad feelings and conflict. Why would you do that to them?
Okay. We will come back to the topic of implementation regarding question three. We are now on to the consent agenda. So there's a request to approve the following: Town Common and Bandstand. The event is the Parish Center for the Arts, Pop and Music and Magic. Applicant is Julie Anne Govong. The date is Saturday, July 22nd, Sunday, July 23rd, and the time is 11 to 6 p.m. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
All in favor?
Hi.
We can vote by hand today?
Yeah.
Okay. 710 item, and thank you for the, Sam Eng from National Grid for hanging with us. Our 710 item is a continuation of the public hearing. Poll petition, National Grid request for Massachusetts Electric Company, DVA National Grid. Job number 230759193F to locate poles, wires, fixtures, including the necessary sustaining and protecting fixtures along and across the following public way. Groton Road, National Grid to install one JO pole on Groton Road beginning at a point approximately zero feet southwest of the center line of the intersection of Oak Hill Road and Groton Road and continuing approximately 215 feet in a northeasternly direction. National Grid to install proposed pole 2350 for commercial service. Upgrade, locate 497 Groton Road. In addition, for permission to lay and maintain underground laterals, cables, and wires in the above or intersecting public ways for the purpose of making connections with poles and buildings as each of said petitioners may desire for distributing purposes. And we're joined by Sam from National Grid. Sam?
So we're having some technical difficulties getting Sam on the Zoom, but I do have him on the conference call. So if that would be acceptable?
Yeah, let's proceed.
So Sam, I have you on my speakerphone, my cellphone. If you could please mute your computer so we can hear you. All right. Thank you.
Good evening, Counsel. This is Sam Eng, National Grid, North End over design.
All right, welcome.
Yeah. So 497 Groton Road Working Man LLC is upgrading their service to a new voltage. National Grid proposes to install pole 23-50, which is a midpole between 23 and 24, to install transformers and then come across the street with new conductor with the new voltage to feed 497 Groton Road.
Okay. And I think you've had some conversation with Steve Cronin on this issue. Steve, do you want to share your, any comments or concerns you have?
We've reviewed the proposal. We don't have any concerns with respect to where it's going to be installed or how it's going to cross the public way.
Any, any questions from members of the board? Any, any questions from members of the board? Okay. There being none, I'll entertain a, oh, it's just a public hearing. Okay.
If asked for a public comment.
Any public comment related to this issue?
Now I'll move to close the public.
Okay. Can I have a second?
A second.
Okay. All in favor of closing the public meeting?
Aye.
Okay. And is there any vote for that required? Or this was just a public hearing?
Yes. You would need to vote to approve the poll petition request.
I'll move to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Sam.
All right, Sam, your approval will follow up with the paperwork this week. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Apologize for the technical difficulties.
Thank you.
No, no problem at all. 720 item is a request to accept a donation of up to $5,000 for materials associated with construction of cricket pitch at Stony Brook Middle School. And Chris, do you want to say a few words about that?
Yeah. I'm going to say a few words, and I'm going to turn it over to the cricket enthusiasts, and they're going to speak to the board, if that's okay?
That'd be great.
So, I'm real excited about this agenda item. This is a collaborative effort between school staff, DPW staff, facilities, Park and Rec Commission, all in an effort to try and enhance the opportunities to play cricket in our community. Cricket is a growing sport. Surrounding communities have actually built out pitches and fields for their community members. And while we have been able to provide cricket enthusiasts with a smaller area to play in the Greystone Recreation Area, we have to be able to provide them with a full-size field. And cricket happens to need a very, very big space in order to do that. So, the number of places where we could have sited a field is, is few and far between. So, again, kudos to our staff at WA and our facilities director, Steve Cronin, DPW, Kyle Fox, Assistant DPW, all working collaboratively to try and get these guys somewhere to play. And so, the solution that the group came up with was to locate a field, locate the cricket field on the two soccer fields that are off of Farmer Way as you're coming into the Stony Brook School area. And one of the things that is necessary in order to play cricket is a pitch. And this is a roughly 10-foot by 75-to-80-foot hardened surface that the, is it bowling or bowl? Yeah. So, and so, the group needed to have one of these established. And it would get a cost of ground, $10,000 to put something in. That's quite a heavy lift for, you know, anybody to do. And so, we tried to look for ways to make this a little bit more financially palatable for the group and to move this forward so that they could actually play this season, mainly a summer sport. So, as a result, what we came up with was, this group was generous enough to go out and do some fundraising and is willing to donate to the community, or to Westford, the funds necessary for the materials and the rental of any equipment. And our DPW staff is actually going to do the installation if this board chooses to accept the donation. So, at that, I'm going to turn the mic over to our cricket group and let them say a few words.
Thank you, Chris. First of all, thank you very much for giving us this opportunity.
If you wouldn't mind just stating your name and your address.
Dinesh Marichala, I'm from 13 Catalane, Westford.
Thank you so much.
So, like I was saying, Chris has been really helpful to us. We have been trying to get a cricket field, a proper-sized cricket field for about 12 years now in Westford. And I've been leading the effort. I worked with Pat Savage previously. She is the one who helped me with getting the ground in Greystone Field. But that is, like Chris was saying, it is a small field, and the pitch was not constructed properly. So, we were having some injuries and all of that. So, we moved away from Westford to Acton. And, yeah, the cricketing fraternity has grown up so much that when I started playing, there were about 12 teams. Now, there are about 60 teams playing in the same league. So, so, fields are at a premium. We are not able to get a proper field. And so, I came back, I started searching, and both Jeff and Chris were really helpful in getting us a place and a suitable ground to play on. So, so, like Chris was saying, we would be really happy to donate the money that is required for the material and for the construction of the pitch, whatever equipment that is needed. I would kindly request you to please approve this so that Westford, as a city, would be able to have a ground. And also, what I failed to mention is, we are working with North America Cricket Association, which helps youth play this game. And they, they are, so, so, we are collaborating with them, and they're going to come along with us. So, what that would bring is, there would be coaching staff, there would be people who would be able to help the youth. Whoever is interested in the game, they would be able to learn the game, and they would be able to play the game in the future as well. So, so, that is our intention. We want to develop the game of cricket. We, we think that it is a good opportunity for everybody within Westford to see the sport, I mean, happening in real time, and then also see it grow. It's, right now, USA is playing qualifiers at the, in Zimbabwe. Right now, there's a World Cup happening this year, and they are right now at their trails to qualify for that event.
Great. Thank you very much. And any other, before I go to questions from the board, any other presentation?
I just have one question.
Please.
If we should approve this, Steve, how long will it take to construct the pitch?
We anticipate it's going to take us roughly a week.
Okay.
Three to four days at most. You know, once the money's approved, we, we can order the materials, and as soon as we have an opportunity, we'll get right on it.
Great. Thank you.
John?
Could you describe the construction? What's this going to look like?
So, I mean...
I've got the plan here, but we call it, say, the pitch.
Right. So, so, what I call pitch is some, some surface for the ball to bounce on. So, we play with leather ball or with a tennis ball, a hard tennis ball. So, what happened is, when I went to Jeff, he asked us to mow the grass down and see if the ball would bounce there. And there was no real bounce. So, when you, when you, when you hit the ball, it would just die there. So, cricket is where, so, so, before, so, for baseball, you don't have to pitch the ball, right? You throw it directly. But for cricket, the ball has to bounce before it gets to the batsman.
Yeah. I watched a cricket match. I had it explained to me. I can't remember what the guy said. And, you know...
They run back and forth.
Yeah. And you score a lot of runs.
Right.
I guess my concern is this. You're going to create a pitch there. It's going to be different texture, different material than the grass around it. It's going to be in between two fields that are used for, what, soccer or other things?
Soccer, yes. So, so, that the place that we chose is, is where the bleachers were previously between the two soccer fields. And what it is going to look like is, it's going to look like the baseball field that you have, right? I mean, the outer circle. So, it's going to look similar to that. So, we'll have topsoil, and we'll roll it down so that it will be hard enough for the ball to bounce.
So, it won't be a hazard for, you know, when, when you're not playing?
No, it won't be a hazard.
There's nothing there that indicates that's what it is?
It's all natural material. We are not bringing any concrete. We are not bringing any foreign material to it. It's, it's, it's all like, what you get is like, so, you put stone dust, you compact it, and then you put topsoil on, on top of it. And the topsoil has to have more clay content so that it will bind a little bit more, and it won't break, chip away easily. That is the only requirement for us.
Yeah. I guess I was concerned about a change in texture or something where somebody's playing another sport, and they run over this and it tripping them.
It should not be a problem. That's what our priority was, and we worked with Jeff about it, and he was very particular about it, right from the word go. Because, so, what he was trying to explain was, the town in Acton, what they have is, they have like three pitches which are made of cement, and they put turf on top of it. So, an artificial turf is what they have on, on it. And that is what we were trying to avoid. We didn't want to bring in a concrete pitch as of now, because that, that is something we didn't know if it would impede other sports. So, we want to be collaborative with everyone. We want to have a place where we could play, and that could be utilized for multi-sports.
Okay. Good. Glad to ask that question. I had a similar question. Any other, any other questions from the board about this?
No. I think this is exactly what we should be doing, and if, and Steve, you did a great job on the Community Garden. If you have a good job with this, we'll have a great pitch, so...
Oh, that's great. I'm sorry. If you come to the microphone, please, and if you say your name and your address.
So, my name's June McMaro. I live on Kingspine Road. And I echo what you said. I think it's great that people will be out engaging in this. So, it seems that it's a $5,000 initial investment that you've raised privately. How much do you anticipate it would cost to maintain these fields? Would that come from dues that teams play from using the fields, or would the expectation be that this would somehow roll into the town's budget? So, what would the cost be annually, and who would be paying for that, or how would it be paid for?
Thank you. Excellent question. I'm going to ask Chris to answer it. And just to be clear, there's, there's sort of two things happening tonight. One is, we're voting to accept a donation. So, that is not town funds. We're just accepting the donation. The second thing is that we would be accepting the hands-on work of our DPW team, which does, does have an expense. But just to be clear, what we're voting on. Yep? Go ahead, Chris.
Yeah. That's a great question. So, this is a permitted use. So, this is a school facility. So, the permitting authority is Jeff Bunyan, the Westford Academy Athletic Director. So, he has met with this group and has agreed to issue a permit, and there is a fee associated with that permit, and that fee would go towards maintenance.
Do you have any idea of the amount? So, what's the annual maintenance?
Sorry, five minutes.
Yeah. It's, we'll accept that. So, the question was, what, what's the estimated annual maintenance expense?
So, there is no annual maintenance as such. It's, it's more, more like the baseball mound that you have. So, we are going to roll it, and we're going to maintain it, and so, so, it's not, there is no expense to the city as such.
So, you're going to do the work?
Yes. Exactly.
Great. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you so much. Other questions? Yes, Emily, please.
Emily Teller, 9 Texas Road. I think this is a fabulous idea. I love thinking that we have this in town. My question is, hold on, it's in my head somewhere. I just thought about, ooh, I'll come back. I forgot. I completely forgot my question. But you'll vote, so I'll have another minute.
Anytime Emily can email me a question, I'll do my best to...
No trees, we're in Kedemli. We're safe on trees.
Okay. Any other, any other questions for this tonight? Okay. If there are any questions, then I will entertain a motion to accept the donation of up to $5,000 for materials associated with construction of cricket pitch at the Stony Brook Middle School.
Some moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Great. Thank you, and thank you so much for your commitment to the community. We really appreciate it.
Thanks, guys.
Will this pitch be used as competition for the other teams around?
Chris?
I'm going to let, yeah, Dinesh, speak to the particulars of the arrangement that he made with Jeff Bunyan regarding that.
Yes, there will be teams that will be coming from outside, but we'll be utilizing it for residents, Westford residents will be playing in the, in our team. And there will be teams that would be coming and visiting us. And for NCAA, it is throughout Massachusetts. So, so, kids all over Massachusetts will be able to use that facility.
And grownups, too.
Yeah. So, NCAA is youth. So, it will be like the kids, and they will be training, and they will be having games from 12 to 6, from 12 in the noon to 6 in the evening. Our games, they tend to last about three hours, and there will be people coming in from outside of the city, too. But our team, the team that I'm, I'm representing, and most of our people are from Westford, and there are like few people from here. But other than that, yeah, it's, it's all within Westford.
So, the, the bleachers have been removed to provide the space?
Right.
So, is there any space for viewers or audience?
So, the question you, Dinesh, is for people who come and watch, is there a good situation for observers?
So, there is usually a boundary. What we set up is with cones, and people can stay out and they can watch, like, just like a soccer game.
Right. You can sit in their chairs.
There are some, there are some benches still there, Emily, so people can watch from a bench if they don't have their own chairs.
Okay. Good discussion. Any other questions? Oh, we already voted. Okay. Thank you so much. We're already on to the next one. Emily, you threw me off my game. 725, request and establish a school zone with a speed, school speed limit at Westford Academy. Steve?
Thank you very much. Earlier this year, we worked with members of the Pest Street Safety Committee to apply for a grant for combination dynamic speed feedback and school zone speed limit sign assemblies for Westford Academy. As a condition of that grant, we are required, as a town, to establish a formal school zone around WA. We've had a signed school zone for a number of years, but we are looking to establish a school zone based on the recent 2022 Massachusetts amendments to the Mass Uniform Traffic Control Manual. So, we had members of engineering, along with our traffic consultants, evaluate the school zone, recommend signage, and we had to locate the school zone assemblies. And that's what you have before you. So, we are looking for approval for that tonight, so we can get that to Mass DOT, and we can get these installed prior to the start of school in September.
Okay. First, any questions from the board about this proposal? Yep? Andrea?
I guess my first question is, have you notified the folks who live along these roads that these signs and speed limit signs and flashing lights are going to be coming to them?
So, most of the signage is existing. We're just going to be updating it with the appropriate signs. The only new signs are going to be the school limit sign assemblies themselves, which are, do flash and have lights on them. We've looked at locations, you know, away from homes and away from windows and things like that. But yes, we will be contacting those residents specifically to notify them that they will be installed.
And my understanding is, they'll be, they'll, they should be set on timers so that they don't go all day long and all night long?
Yes. So, they're fully programmable. They'll be, you know, set to only run during school hours, morning commute and afternoon commute, and to provide, you know, obviously, the speed feedback when someone's exceeding the speed limit.
And, and then I have one other question. Do these signs have to be the fluorescent green-yellow color? Or can they just be the plain yellow color?
Unfortunately, to meet MUTCD, they do have to be the fluorescent yellow. That's actually what's out there now. Those signs were updated a number of years ago, so they do meet the current code. You know, where, where it's not warranted, we certainly won't put the fluorescent signs. We'll, we'll try to be respectful of that.
Thank you.
I had a question, just have the school, the relevant school parties been consulted on this plan?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions? Any questions from the public? Yeah, Ellen?
Ellen Hardy, 39 Main Street. My question is always the same. What is the correlation between enforcement and the number of signs on Baton Road? We put up so many signs all over Westford Center, Forge Village. It's never made any difference in terms of what speed people drive. I don't think the number of tickets has increased. That's a lot of signage, and I just would like just a glimmer of hope that it would make a difference in how fast people drive and that the police would enforce it. So Steve, I don't know if you've been in touch with Chief Chambers, but I just hate to see lovely new signs and absolutely no difference at all. So, thank you.
Thanks. Steve, if you, do you have a comment?
Just to mention that these signs do have the ability to collect data, and as part of the program, we have to collect data for the first year to determine whether or not they're effective, which would be able to provide the police department with some data to determine whether or not additional enforcement is needed.
Thanks. And it's a good question. Maybe for some future event, we can ask Chief. In particular, the signage on Boston Road. My own anecdotal opinion, which is not data, is that that has been effective, but I'd be very interested in any data that exists that would tell us whether that's working or not.
I have a quick question.
Yep, please, Kathy.
What kind of data does this collect?
Just speed data.
So just speed, if number of cars going by and speed?
Yep.
Great, thank you. Any other questions? Okay, I think we, I'm looking for a motion to establish, to approve the establishment of a school zone with a school speed limit at Westford Academy. Second? I'm sorry, do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Okay, fantastic. 735, to approve, thanks, Steve. Hey, Steve, I hate to ask you to do this, but can you make sure that anyone who would like a seat, a chair out there has a chair? We're in overflow, so I just, I see a bunch of folks out there that may want somewhere to sit. Thanks. Okay, number 735, to approve statewide opioid settlement fund projects and programs. And is Nicole here? There's Nicole. Hi, Nicole. Nicole, we can just barely hear you. I'm sorry, we're not able to hear you. Eric to the rescue. We hope. For those that haven't met Nico-
Can you hear me better now?
Oh, much better. Thanks, Nicole. For those that haven't met Nicole before, Nicole's our community wellness coordinator in Westford. Welcome, Nicole.
Hi. So you can hear me?
Yep, you sound great.
Oh, thank you. All right. So thank you for having me. I'm just going to give you a little overview before going into our recommendation for the requests. So August of last year, former town manager Jody Ross put together a work group of town departments to look at the opioid settlement funds and the statewide opioid settlement municipal use of payment funds and how the town can use the funds that we receive. As of today, the town has received $129,997.88 of settlement money. And based on our projections, Westford will receive $618,151.84. At town meeting in March, the town approved the appropriation of $129,997.88 of the account. The group has met several times over the months to look at what's been done within the town in the past and as far as how best to use these funds. We have representation from the schools, police, fire, town social worker, the health department, really looking at the deaths that have occurred due to opioid-related use, distribution of Narcan that has been administered by police and fire, and then also what has been occurring overall in the town. And the lens is really look at utilizing these funds for prevention as far as within the schools and through training that can be done for teachers, but also that can be done through a youth mental health first aid, adult mental health first aid for the Westford residents. And look that there is also a request around Narcan lock boxes to be provided to businesses along 495 and 110 as a, for businesses with training if they'd be willing to have those within their businesses. Also rescue kits being provided to first responders and also through the health department for anybody that would like to take the youth mental health and adult mental health first aid. That's a brief overview of the memo that's in the packet. I don't know if there are questions?
Thank you, Nicole. Yeah, let's first go to questions from the board. Any questions? John?
Yeah, Nicole, most of these are really to provide resources for people affected by the opioid incident or situation. I didn't see anything in the, in the thing that said that these were the things that we would spend our money on that provided for taking staff surveys and things like that. And I noticed one of them's in here, pretty good size, $21,000 for surveys. Is that consistent with what was supposed to be allowed for this opioid, opioid money?
So I think you're referencing the PANAMA?
Yes.
So PANAMA is a survey that's done for social, emotional, for the students, but it's also a survey done for the staff as well. So the, I don't know if it's been done for two years or one year, but this is an existing survey that's done within Westford Public Schools, pre-K up to 12. And so the information is linked with the opioid settlement funds of abatement through DPH as far as what we can use because it's through that social, emotional learning and what we're learning through those surveys as far as how the children are feeling, as far as a sense of belonging and other respects that can then be linked into how to incorporate curriculum and other things within the, within the school district.
Okay, thank you. Other questions? Yeah, Chris?
Sorry, just on the same point. The Power School integration of the survey, how does that work? Why are we, do we share data with Power School, or is it, like, how does that?
So I do have a little bit of information. So in addition, I'm actually going to answer something before you ask. There is also training that goes with this, sorry. So the teachers and staff are trained in how to utilize the information that is retrieved through PANAMA. And then the Power School and the Power Source is the system that's used to retrieve the data. So to answer your question about what's, how it's utilized through the platform, unfortunately, I don't have that information from the Westford Public Schools, but I can get back to you with it.
Yeah, my concern is, you know, if they don't need to know this personal information, we shouldn't be sharing it with them. So I didn't know if that was done for a specific reason. It sounds like it may be. But yeah, if you could follow up, that would be helpful.
Oh, yeah. So the school system did utilize this platform last year. So this was already integrated into the school survey last year, but we can pick up to it.
Thanks, Chris. And Nicole, these are, it's great programs, good to put them to work. I'm sure people in the community know that we continue to lose community members to substance use disorder, you know, recently continuing tragically. So glad this is going to work. And we look forward to having you come and share more broadly some of the work you're doing in a future select board meeting. So we will get that on the agenda. And Dennis, I see you with the mic.
Thank you, thank you. Dennis Galvin, 90 Conca Road. The question, I, simple question is, of the percentage of the money that you received, can you, in an estimate, make an estimate as to how much of it has gone into drug education and actual hands-on or in-classroom or on student-to-student type learning? Can you just give us an idea how much that went? Thank you.
So just to be clear, none of the funds have been spent to date. So this is all in the planning process and the projects are being brought before the board this evening. So I just want to make that clarification while Nicole gathers her information.
Yeah, so Nicole, for anyone in the public, they can look at the packet and take a look and build this, you know, pie chart in their minds. But if you could give us a quick, a quick response to Dennis's question, just if you're going to bucket the money into sort of, you know, hands-on helping people versus crisis response, how would you do that?
So as far as the school piece, if I'm doing the math correctly, I think we're about 71,000 as far as the money that's going directly towards the students within the school. That goes with the training and the direct service counseling and the two presentations. And yes, so I think it's about 71. And then if you added PANAMA, which is the survey, which in theory is, you know, gathering information about how children are feeling and as far as their social, emotional, and how we can support them based on the survey data, then you would add another 20. So that'd be about 92,000.
Good. Thanks, Nicole. Other questions, either from the public or from the board? Great, great work, Nicole. Thank you for putting this together. I'm looking for a motion to approve the statewide opioid settlement fund projects and programs as presented.
So moved.
Great. All in favor? Okay, on to old and, I'm sorry, did someone say?
I just said thank you.
Oh. Let's keep saying that, please. Old New Business, 745, Strategic Planning Retreat. Kristen?
Sure. At your last meeting, we presented three topics, areas for a potential, for the strategic planning retreat that will be held on September 7th this year at Kimball Farms from 5:00 PM to 8:00 PM. At our department head meeting last week, we had further conversations about potential topics, and I did gather other topics at that point in time throughout the week. So we've updated the memo to include five areas of potential topics. So the Budget Task Force, which is well underway on their work, water PFOS and water rates, MBTA communities zoning bylaw processes that will be getting underway with the MBTA Community Advisory Group, sustainability, building retrofits for residential buildings, and the school feasibility study. So that's five, which is a lot. And I know from just hearing and having conversations that your strategic planning retreat has had several ways about it. There have been specific presentations, there have been tables, there have been booths, there's been roundtables or small discussions. So with that, you know, September 7th is going to be coming around the corner quite quickly. We want to make sure that staff and boards and committees are prepared for this event. So wanted to receive a little bit more feedback from the board this evening related to topics and structure of the event so we can move forward in that planning and make sure that it's successful for the community and we get the feedback and the information that we need.
And I think we're looking for just a couple of minutes of open discussion about what people have liked before and would like to see this time. So I don't know if anyone has, wants to lead off? Yeah, go ahead, please.
Sorry, just before we get to that, the building retrofit projects, just a little background on that? Do you have any more detail?
Yeah, so that comes from the Sustainability Coordinator and the Clean Energy Committee to help educate residents about things that they can do by either calling Mass Save, about changing light bulbs or insulation or windows or other things that can be done to save on costs or converting from gas appliances or propane appliances to electric appliances and those types of things.
I had the same question. So building could be a lot of things. We're talking about people's houses.
Yep. Thank you.
Yeah, that was my question too.
Scott?
That was sort of my assumption, so thank you for clarifying.
Sure.
So I mean, with that in mind, I was thinking that that's a great topic for a table because, you know, strategic planning retreat, we want to talk about, I think, town, you know, longer-term strategy. And that's more of a cost savings for homeowners, but that's the kind that will draw people, I think, into that table. So I guess my, my thoughts have been for priorities. One was the PFAS water because, A, it's, you know, in the news constantly. But also, we've had a discreet decision at select board meetings, town meeting, to increase water rates. So I think people want to understand, you know, where's it going and why and tech, what is a PFAS? And I think for some people. And then secondly, the Budget Task Force, because I think that's, apart from the fact the town should hear what you're thinking, the Budget Task Force, I'm guessing wants to, but the town has priorities too. So I think that's a good, good two-way street. So from my standpoint, those are the two I would, we could have four, but those are the two everybody would like to see.
Yeah, I know the Budget Task Force was really interested in the kind of breakout roundtable style to share a little bit of information, but mostly listen to how people prioritize different expenditures in town, so.
So should we decide on the format that we, and then we can, based off the format, select the topics? Because are we, are we saying we're going to do two topics? Are we going to say we're going to do roundtable? What are we?
I think we can give Kristen a little bit of input tonight, and then maybe she can come back again and say, "Sounds like we're going to do this," and get a little bit further refined feedback. So if they're topics that you think are better, better structured for a 20-minute large group sort of broadcast style or things that are better for a table, like Scott said, I think if we can kind of match the best form for each, we'll come back again and give a more complete outline.
Just to go double dip, I guess. But I mean, if I think about past retreats and what, 10 years or so of them now, that many people in the open air with a presentation format doesn't really work that well. From the back, you can't hear. So I think just the breakout sessions work better just because of the logistics of the venue. But that's, again, just a thought.
Yeah, I think you're right. Particularly, I remember last year, it was, you know,
Very hard.
It was really, really hard to hear people. And then when people had questions or comments, you know, we were running around with microphones and some people weren't getting heard. And so I'm thinking that maybe we need to go back to the roundtable methodology. You know, because I just think it gives people more opportunity to interact with whoever is facilitating the discussion at the roundtables. I think if we do that, though, then the burden is on us to make sure that we have enough facilitators for the roundtables so that we can-
And rotating through.
Yeah.
Yeah, John?
Yeah, I've heard several comments about the breakout sessions. They said that worked much better. So you had, you know, half an hour, and then you break and move to a second one. Everybody gets a chance at least two of those, depending on how many we have.
Yeah.
And then hopefully that would keep the noise down and we could get some good discussion. I like that.
Yeah, I think it makes a lot of sense to, to limit the size so that people really can hear and sort of feel like they have to pay attention. The problem with a really big group is if you're on the edge. I've been on the edge plenty of times chatting with my neighbor, and it's distracting, so.
Maybe look at scheduling ice cream later, maybe?
Okay, does that, does that give you a running start, Kristen?
Yeah, I think what I'm hearing is budget task force, water PFOS and water rates, MBTA communities, and maybe school feasibility study for breakout groups, sustainability for residential building retrofits, a table inviting boards and commissions to have tables, I've heard in the past as well, so doing that. So that's what I'm hearing right now. If there's any other feedback, willing to take that on. But I'll try to architect this for your next meeting to have more discussion.
Yeah, at least once in the style we've been talking about, I think we did like four quadrants, and everyone could pick two topics, and then we gave the same, if you were a speaker, you gave the same thing four times in a row, basically, or twice in a row, I guess, if people can just do two.
Okay.
If that makes sense.
Yeah.
Yeah, some things are just demonstrations or, you know,
Right.
words out and explain.
Yeah, some things are sort of one-way communication and some things invite
Yep.
discussion. Okay, we're good for that? Okay. Next up, recommendations for implementation of Indigenous Peoples' Day. So Joe and-
Emily.
Oh, I'm sorry, Emily, do you have a question? Please, please come to the mic. Thank you for, thanks, board, for helping me out.
Emily Teller, nine Texas Road.
Yep.
I'm a little sad that sustainability, I'm a member of Westford Climate Action, and that sustainability and the retrofits of home is now sort of not part of the roundtable, but a display table. And I just feel like it's a nice opportunity for people to really get together and talk about what they can do for their homes and get information back from that. And a parenthetical question is, I was here a couple of meetings ago and asked if each of you would call Mass Save and get an audit for your home. And I know I was supposed to give you a phone number, and we use that company and we weren't really impressed with them. So I'll still get on that. But I think really, if this town is serious about sustainability, the leadership should take the first step that everybody has to do in town before they get grants and, you know, rebates and stuff like that. But I just would want the sustainability aspect to somehow be given a little bit more oomph at the-
Okay, thanks, Emily. And there's not really a reason, if we're doing this, everyone can pick two to limit to four. We could have five stations and people could pick two that they want to see amongst those five. So there's not really a reason to not do that. Yep, John?
Like I said, in on the Clean Energy meeting the other night, and they were still talking about some possibilities for adding some more to this, you know, to the strategic meeting. They've talked about maybe new subjects or something they wanted to present. I don't think they've come to a conclusion yet. But there's still some potential for something else there.
Okay, we'll investigate that further.
Yeah, I might want to ask.
Actually, what?
Yep, go ahead.
We had the charrette for Graniteville. I mean, I don't know if, any desire to have that for the broader audience, perhaps at the strategic planning retreat?
I think that might be a little bit too late in time, but I can certainly check with the land use department. But I think the deliverables will already come to play by September.
Okay, good, thank you.
I'll tell you real quick.
Yep.
So Emily, I've done the Mass Save program twice. I have a new furnace as a result, plus tons of extra insulation. And I agree with you, if anybody has the time, it's very simple to get, you know, involved with that group, and they come in, they give you all sorts of free stuff. You get low-interest loans. It's definitely a great program to take advantage of.
It's like a half an hour recording, I think, right?
The initial assessment, yes, can be a little longer depending on your house and its age.
The size of your house.
Yeah, it could be a couple hours, but it's worth it. You definitely, it's definitely worth doing, in my opinion. So thank you for bringing it up.
Thank you for speaking to your colleagues.
Chris gets a gold star. My wife, Sarah, gets a gold star for doing it. And offline, I'll tell you what they, the blow-in insulation people found in our attic, which was pretty scary.
Bodies?
No, not, not human bodies, no. Okay.
Were you going to leave us hanging?
They came running down the attic stairs and said, "There's a snake! There's a snake!"
I was baby squirrels, so.
Oh, that's cuter. That's cuter. Okay, next up is recommendations. Thank you, thank you all for contributing to that. So next up, recommendations for implementation of Indigenous Peoples' Day. Joe and Anjali, or Joe, it looks like you're here. Please come up and join us. As an entree to this, so the agenda item, we will, if people have comments specific to the agenda item here, people will have a chance to comment. We've already heard comments earlier. I just want to recap the timeline for anyone who's joining this newly. And I may ask my colleagues for some help, but this, this topic did come before an annual town meeting. It did not pass, but at that same annual town meeting, the annual meeting advised us to ask the DEI committee to study this topic closely. They did that. They brought their findings back to us. We had a chance to comment on the, on the format of the question, the style of the question, what the wording actually said. We did that. That went before annual town meeting, went before the ballot measure here and received a majority of the vote, and we know we had a recount. So what we're holding right now, I think, is a pretty clearly worded, majority-voted item here. And, you know, certainly invite my colleagues to have whatever comments or questions we'd like. But at this point, I feel like we now have this to act on. In order to do that in the right way, we've invited the DI committee to come and make some recommendations for what implementation would look like, and we're eager to hear those. But I think the discussion right now is limited to, you know, how do we move forward with this majority vote we've received with very specific wording, and what exactly that will look like in terms of implementation steps. John?
Well, when we first debated this, there was an impression that we did not have a chance, a time, to change the wording. I remember the additional discussions, and we passed it on for the vote.
Right.
And I'd just like to remind everybody, this is a non-binding, public opinion advisory question. And then we need to do, you know, do deliberation on this thing and discussion before we just run off and do it as worded, because I think it's still up to some debate.
Well, I think we're, so let's, let's listen to the recommendations here. And then I guess as part of the recommendation discussion, if people have other questions or comments, we can- we can talk about what those are. Okay. So Joe?
Thank you very much. I see Anjali Rajput, my co-chair.
Hi, Anjali. Welcome.
It has been a two-and-a-half-year process, a two-and-a-half-year conversation. And while we absolutely appreciate all sides, the vote was taken and recounted. We have heard from a variety of town officials that while they may not agree, they will abide by what the people of Westford have said. In fact, this question came before each of the ways that we make decisions in Westford. It came before this board, it came before town meeting, and it came before the voters. And then it was approved twice, essentially. So we're thrilled about that, grateful for that. And on behalf of Anjali and the rest of the DEI committee, we want to continue that process, and we've made recommendations for its implementation. To further advance the purpose of ballot question three, passed on May 2nd, we have the following recommendations. The town include in all calendars, including the school system calendar, and across all platforms, including the town website, Indigenous Peoples' Day on the second Monday of October. That the town continue to work with the school system and the library to enhance educational content about Indigenous Peoples' Day. The town work with the DEI committee to plan events from time to time that celebrate Indigenous Peoples'. The town work with the DEI committee to learn about how Indigenous Peoples' Day groups, such as Indigenous Peoples' Day Massachusetts, as well as Italian-Americans for Indigenous Peoples' Day, and other municipalities in Massachusetts, have adopted Indigenous Peoples' Day, how they recognize it and celebrate it. This is certainly not an exhaustive list. We just want to make this recommendation, and we very much appreciate this opportunity at the end of a two-and-a-half-year process.
While we're talking about this, Eric, could you go ahead and put the requested list up on the board so people can see it?
Can you louder?
Yes. And going forward, Joe, if you could just remember, we've got some folks in an unmiked area out there. If you haven't done this before, the mics are not amplifying what's going on. They're picking up voice for the people who are listening on Westford Capital, looking online. So unfortunately, to be heard, you do have to shout a little bit. So thank you for this. If you go down just a little bit, you'll get the bullet, you've got the beginning of the bullet list, but here's the bullet list as we have here. Just for record, I did communicate with the school committee, and the schools have already implemented the calendar change on their school calendar, and are considering sort of curriculum support and other things that would be part of a change of recognition of that day. So I think the items before us are essentially changing the town calendar for other opportunities, you know, as come up with all holidays. So John, let me come back to you, and anyone else who has a comment on path forward for implementation guidance we should give down staff based on the vote. John?
Okay. Well, first of all, the recommendations, they say this is now policy, and I would say that that's not true, because this is a non-binding, public opinion advisory question on the ballot. It's not like an election. It doesn't mean that because of the vote that we have to go forward by that vote.
That's on us, John.
I know that's on us, but I just want to make that clear.
Yep. It's not on them.
Well, I got a sense, the way you introduced this, is we are going to move forward, and that's the direction of moving forward as it is. And I think we need to have some further discussion, discussions that we did not have when we passed this on to the ballot. We just said we will let the people decide on the ballot, knowing it's a non-binding advisory vote. They're advising us, this is what they think that we should do for the 15-vote margin. It's up to us to figure that out. Now, I have some questions for the DEI committee. If you hadn't chosen the 12th of October for Indigenous Peoples' Day, what date would you have chosen other than that?
John, that's not something that we talked through. We don't have that.
Well, that's part of the problem here, I think, because I think that you had a target, and your target was Columbus Day. And I know, I voiced that concern the first time when you came up, and I hope when you went back, I said, "I have a sense that, you know, we should be looking at something that has more meaning to the Indigenous people in this state, in this town, than just saying, 'We want Indigenous Peoples' Day,'" which I think we all agree that we like to have. I have no problem with an Indigenous Peoples' Day. My problem is, by doing one thing, you're negating another. And this is, this, and that's been my concern the whole time.
If I could...
And so I think that we have the authority to change the wording if we want. We could, we have probably three options. We could say, "No, there's a select board. We hear your advice, but we think it should be another day, a different day, that might be more closely aligned to what happened to the Indigenous people of this area instead of Columbus Day," which is way off. Or we could reword it, or we could pass it as it is. And I think those are the three things that we need to consider. And I just wanted to bring to attention that my feeling is, I don't like, and I didn't like it to begin with, that you would, pumping up Indigenous Peoples' Day, that we have to negate something else. And, you know, we could have said, "Let's do it in November, when the pilgrims landed," because that was the beginning of what changed here. We could do it at the end of the French-Indian War, because that got the French out, and that changed the whole dynamic of the way we treated Indigenous people in this country. So I'm all for Indigenous Peoples' Day. I'm not so much in favor of saying it's got to be this or that. I think it could be both. That's my feeling on it. And I was afraid you were going to say the DEI committee had not looked at any other alternatives. And the lady that voiced her concern over this, saying this might be a slap in the face to Indigenous people, they have other celebrations they have. There's even Independence Day. The Sioux have an Independence Day that they celebrate. Anyway, that's just my opinion.
Okay. Got it. John, other voices on this in terms of, yep?
So we had a vote, and the community in our residence voted on the question that was presented to them. And that question that was presented to them asked them whether or not they wanted to declare the second Monday as in October as Indigenous Peoples' Day. The vote passed, and granted, it was very small, and it was a 15-vote margin, but it passed. And I understand that it's a non-binding resolution, but we get non-binding resolutions from various other places. We get non-binding resolutions from our town meeting, and we get a non-binding, and that we always, as a board, take very seriously. Where this has been an election, and where there was a vote, and where the majority of the folks who voted, voted to pass this ballot question, to designate the second Monday in October as Indigenous Peoples' Day. At least I, for one, am not prepared to sit here and basically negate and invalidate what has been passed by our town voters. It would be the same thing as if I ignored a resolution that came from town meeting, and I have never done that either. And it doesn't matter whether I agree or I disagree with the resolution is or the ballot question is. I'm listening to the voters, and the voters in here, in this particular instance, have told us what they want to do. So I am prepared to support this and to recognize what the voters have done and to move forward.
Thanks. Scott?
So, I'll make it, probably make it a bit unhappy with me, but, so I actually agree with both John and Andrea. So when you have a vote, we had a vote at town meeting, it went a certain way, but we explicitly went to a ballot question to get the broadest possible view of the town. Town meeting is great, but it's not a broad cross-section. So we made a, at least I made a conscious decision to go to a ballot question, because that was the best opinion we were going to get, and we got results. Now, I don't think it's a mandate, but it's passed, okay? And if we had passed 51 main by one vote, we'd be higher architects today, right? So, you know, we honor votes. You know, I guess my reservation is that we could have had this thing pass 85% in favor if we'd picked Indigenous Peoples' Day and Columbus Day. I do think DEI made a conscious decision to obliterate Columbus, and that was the result. I'm a little actually concerned, because future things say, "Well, let's work with DEI on future events." Well, they didn't listen to the town. You know, the town said, as part of surveys, as part of feedbacks, that we want both, and DEI ignored that and forced this down, down this one narrow path. So while I would say yes to the first bullet point, we have to change the calendar, the town did vote to do that, I'm not on board with saying, "Okay, DEI, you've got carte blanche to go out and, you know, remove Columbus from the public square."
Can I add, this is Anjali, can I add some information to what has been said right now? Is it okay?
It'll be okay, but why don't I just ask Chris if he wants to weigh in before we do that, just so everyone's had a chance to share where they are. You're happy to weigh?
Yeah, I'm new to this discussion in some way, so I'm happy to get more information.
Okay. Great. Anjali, please.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak. Ultimately, I would, so I have two points. One is the question being asked about, there was a feedback from the people of the town in the survey, and if we should have considered both, celebrating both. If we go by that feedback, there were lots of negative comments, there was a lot of negativity that was said. There were a lot of mean comments said to DEI as well, right, and to many other people within the town. So if you really want to go about each and every comment that came to the survey, then that, well, we will open up our eyes that we are not doing the justice to all the causes that we stand by as a DEI committee. That's one point, right? What we want to achieve as a town, we want to, we want to be very inclusive as a town. That's one point. And secondly is, yes, this vote was non-binding, but at the same time, if, let's say if the majority of the voters would have voted, that they don't want it, and maybe just by 10 votes, would the select board have actually taken a point into consideration to go in the other direction? And I believe not. Third point, and probably I'll just take another minute, is when we came to select board, few meetings ago, a few months ago, about taking a vote to support this cause and change, we were informed that, "Why don't you go back to the town, get the votes, and if it actually wins, right, if it wins by the, the case wins that we should change, then we will support it." So I just want to remind the words that were given by the select board members, that you will support what will be voted by the town people. And now when we see that the majority of them have voted, yes, I don't think it is right to go back from your words. But again, I just want to remind that last conversation, and I'm going to give it back to you, John.
Mr. Chairman, may I respond as well?
Yeah, please.
John, your initial question was if we spoke about a particular...
Joe, I know people are having a hard time here.
Yeah, I'm sorry. It's not a real microphone, so you kind of have to...
Your initial question regarding, can you guys hear me now?
The mic is not on you. I just have to speak.
They don't amplify.
Yeah, unfortunately, that's just to pick up for the signal for the TV. So you just have to pretend you're speaking all the way to, pretend you're speaking to Beth all the way in the back of the room.
Right, right. I'll talk to you. Your initial question, did we pick a particular day, or do we consider a particular day other than Columbus Day? That was your question to me. And then my answer was, we didn't. But you didn't let me finish, so I just want to say that we talked about the possibility of another day. We didn't get into a discussion about which other day. But we talked about that possibility, and then circled back to Columbus Day. So it's a nuance, I know, but it's different than, I think, what you thought I said. We talked about that possibility, but we didn't choose another, and we didn't go deep into that discussion, because we ultimately decided, based on all the feedback, and actually connecting with Indigenous Peoples' organizations, that that was the important day for them. So that's what we chose Columbus Day. We didn't, we did, we did talk through many different aspects of this over the two-and-a-half years, and one of them was that possibility, but we didn't talk about any particular other day.
So you're saying you, can I go ahead?
Yeah, you may, John. Go ahead.
Yeah. So you said that you didn't consider another day?
No, we did. We considered the possibility of another day.
And then, but why did you choose Columbus Day?
Well, because we understand that it's an important day for Indigenous people, for this particular day itself. And I also want to address a point that you made, Scott, which has to do with history. When we appeared before the school committee, it was a really good conversation. In fact, the students who were on the school committee were, I thought, incredibly insightful. The point that was made that day by folks on the school committee and the students who were on the school committee, was that instead of, I think you used the word obliterate?
Yes.
Instead of ignoring, it actually shines a new light on history and gives us...
But you could, sorry.
Please don't finish.
And it gives everybody an opportunity to really examine in a critical way, in a nuanced way, that era in history. So it doesn't ignore, it doesn't obliterate.
But if you really wanted to do that, you would have had Columbus Day and Indigenous Peoples' Day, both. When you preclude one side of a discussion, you obliterate that side of the discussion. That's just common sense. And, you know, when I was a kid, we learned in 1492, Columbus sailed the ocean blue. He's a, okay, Columbus was once taught as Saint Columbus, right, and he wasn't, okay? And we've now gone full circle and said, "But every sin of every explorer, from Cortez to De Soto, or whatever, is now put upon Columbus's head." And that's not fair either, because the truth is someplace in the middle. And I don't know how you have that nuance, and I, so I agree with you, it is a nuanced question. In fact, I think, you know, the pilgrims, you know, the reality is that the first Thanksgiving, you know, the pilgrims were starving, that Bapanoag helped them out. The Bapanoag were at war when they were against it, who outnumbered them, and the pilgrims had guns. This was a, you know, a trading arrangement, not necessarily all altruism. History is full of these kinds of nuances where we romanticize one side or the other. And I think we've over-romanticized Columbus for probably 100 years, and we've now over-romanticized perhaps the Indigenous Peoples for the past 20 or 30 years. And I would have been happier if we just said, "Both have got unique historic perspectives. Both have wonderful things to celebrate, and why can't we be inclusive and somehow incorporate them both?" And that's not what we've done. We've said, "One goes and one stays." And I was having a hard time, you know, I was having a hard time being inclusive when I know there are two sides to a debate. And I'm fully prepared to say the vote stands. I'm not trying to negate a vote, I'm just saying that I would hope that as we think about what is the course of action from this, that it really is that dialogue, and not, "Okay, we're not going to discuss Columbus, we're going to just celebrate Native Americans, because both have got their..." What's amazing to me is not that Columbus found the New World. Anybody sailing east would have found it. What's amazing, he got back, you know, in the days without longitude, he actually found his port. And then three years later, came back and found where he landed again. So, you know, history is probably the best dead record in ever give history. And I don't think we should lose sight of some of these facts, in spite of the fact that his successors were, in some cases, outright tyrants. There's no question about it.
So interesting history, and I'll go back to you, John, but just, what I come back to is, you know, I see my role as enacting the will of the people of Westford, and the best possible read we have of the will of people of Westford is about issue. And so we're holding a ballot issue that is very clear, very clear wording, very clear what the consequences were, and people had a chance, people in Westford are smart and thorough. They had a chance to read it and understand it. They knew what they were, exactly what the issue was put before them, and we have a very clear read on that that is indisputable. And so for me, I feel like, yes, it's an advisory, but I'm trying to imagine a situation where an elected body doesn't respect the word of the public and says, "We know better." I just can't imagine that. That doesn't sound like democracy to me. So for me, what's before us tonight is to accept the result and decide what the consequence is. It's an interesting dialogue. I love talking about history with my colleagues. I mean, all this is very interesting. I just feel like there's something specific that we're here to do, not relitigate what's been happening over the past two-and-a-half years. We were all here for two-and-a-half years, watching it in real time. We've had many chances to weigh in, and what we have right now is a result. So, please, John.
Two or three things. One thing is, when we initially looked at this, I recall, we had a discussion, and it was pretty clear that we were not going to tinker with the wording. We were going to let the thing go through as it was worded. We did not debate it. We didn't talk about the issue itself. And a statement was made that we said we would commit to whatever the vote for was. We never made that commitment. We committed to putting it on the ballot. I don't recall this board ever taking a vote or saying that we were... I don't recall this board ever taking a vote or saying that we were committed to it. And there was one other thing, you know, it's, well, if they, and then there was a statement made that, had it been the other way, what would we have done? What we would have done is found the day for Indigenous Peoples Day is what we would have done. It's what I would have done.
But we wouldn't have ignored the vote if it had gone the other way, and that's really what it comes down to, is that we have a vote.
We could have. Well, I mean, this is a non-advisory, that's the reason we passed it. That's the reason we put it on the ballot, because it was an advisory. I'm taking that advice, and I'm saying, okay, I see that, but I don't agree with 100% of the advice that we got.
So technically, I understand, I wouldn't put myself above the people, the smart people of Westford.
I'm doing that. I'm doing my job. My job is to represent the people of this town. And half of the people of this town went in one way, and the other half went in another.
More than half went in one way and less than half went the other way.
Yes. So anyway, I-
This is the way elections work, but I'm sorry, John, I didn't mean to cut you off. Please finish.
Go ahead.
Okay. Any other, any other discussion from the board about, yeah, Chris?
Yeah, well, question and I have some comments. So what's to stop us from giving direction to DEI to go back to the drawing board and come back with a more inclusive and equitable solution than what we are dealing with today?
Well, I think we're holding, we're holding a vote, so I guess-
Well, we can still take that vote. I'm just saying, after we take that vote, whatever we vote, I mean, we can certainly say, listen, we've heard from a lot of different people, there are obviously folks who are happy with this decision, some folks who aren't happy, but who also sound like they're willing to compromise. So rather than say, hey, no Indigenous Peoples Day, what I'm hearing, at least from some of the folks that are here, they're willing to compromise and say, let's have both. So would we have gotten a better response from the town population if a ballot question was offered that allowed for both to be celebrated, rather than the black and white choice that voters were given? And that's another note. I would love to know the answer to that. It would make my life a lot easier on casting the vote today, to, to understand if that was really the fact that people lacking another choice, if there was a third choice, would they have picked, you know, option C, right?
Go ahead, Scott.
If I just might try to think of how to nuance this. So I, so to me, at least, to me, I think majority of the board, town, town voted in a general, open election, and we have a vote, okay? So in my opinion, there's, the first question is, do we honor that vote? The answer is absolutely yes. And then the second question really is implementation. Okay, given that vote, then what happens? So again, just for me, I've got no problem saying, I, democracy works, right? That that is the, that first bullet, would we change the calendar? Is that's what the town said. To me, the only question really is, then what do you, what does that mean flowing from that? The school committee should do what the school committee wants to do. It's their curriculum, not us. So that leaves us with only really, you know, working with DEI committee on events and so forth, and I think we can discuss what that would look like. So I, I think this is a two-part here. One is, the vote would stand, in my opinion, and secondly, what's that mean for implementation?
And just to be clear, Chris, the vote I was talking about was not the vote we're taking, it's the vote that we got from the ballot. What's, what's different from three years ago, when we asked them basically to do the same assignment that you're talking about, is, is that we now have brought it to the people and we have their word. So that's, that's what I meant. When I said that's what's different.
Sure. Thank you for the clarification.
Okay, I think it's, there's a consensus, I think, that we have a vote and we now need to agree on this. I guess, Dennis, if it's not, if it's not closely-
It's about, it's about procedure, not the, the fusion.
I'm not sure you have a consensus?
It's not a consensus, maybe.
I think maybe we probably need to vote to express whether we're going to accept the vote from the people, from, from our residents first. I think it's, as Scott said, it's, it's two issues.
Yeah, that's a great suggestion.
Do, do we accept the vote, and then what are the implementation?
Okay, so I will, I will accept the motion to-
What if we say we accept it, then that's like voting for it, right?
Yeah.
It's like saying our-
I think, I think if we take a vote to enact this, we need to take a straight-up vote, and I don't think voting now, you get a sense of the committee, but voting now would essentially say, let's go. And I'm not so sure we have that.
Well, I think, at least some of us, at least I'm ready to say, my interpretation of my role here is that we have this clear ballot vote, and we've been asked by the town to, to do something, and so, so at least I'm ready to take that step. I don't know if others are ready to take that step, or if anyone wants to make that motion.
So let's try, let's try, okay? We'll see what happens.
Can I, can I comment? I'm sorry, just wanting to take just 10 seconds and comment before you guys take the vote, and thank you for the opportunity again. The question is, that came up, which I heard, is, what if we ask the DEI to go back to the drawing board and figure out the other solution? And I wanted to just bring it to everybody's attention, what is the cost of that? The cost of not moving forward or sending us back to the drawing board is the time, right? The time that we have spent in the past, and the time we will spend in the future towards the same cause, whereas because we also see that there are many other areas where there are some opportunities for DEI to show the commitment and dedication and continue to contribute towards the town. So before we, you take the vote, it's important to consider the time and the energy spent, the research spent in this particular cause, the time we will spend in the future, and how we can utilize the same time in the upcoming future towards the other areas within the town where we can help our causes. And, and that is all what I wanted to say. So thank you so much.
Okay, thanks, Anjali.
Short public comment?
Dennis, if you've got something that's specific to the implement, to the agenda item here, to the implementation, I'll take your question.
Two questions, two, two points, two points, very short.
Okay, great.
So going back to the issue of the date, just so everybody knows, a motion was made at the, at the 2020 town meeting, by me, to refer a date to the, the DEI committee to actually act on that. They never responded to me, there was no action done on that. And the last thing is, you talked about putting aside a town vote. As far as I'm concerned, you put aside a town meeting decision as well, so consider that as well. Thank you.
Great, and Kathy, I will accept it because I accept it, but please give respect to this room, only if you've got something new that you think is going to add something new to the conversation.
Thank you, Kathy on Rush Road. So there was a listening session, and I did, and there was discussion about the ballot question. I did say the question was too long and it was too biased. So if someone votes for Columbus Day, it's almost as if they're for genocide. That is so wrong to put people in that kind of situation.
Okay, thank you. Any further comments? Are we ready to move to a motion?
Could I just say something?
You can, but this, I'm going to make this the end of, of any input on this topic. People have a lot of chance.
I have a question for the gentleman here.
Feel free.
Because, can you, can you tell us who you are?
By, by procedure, you have to say your name and your address.
Cynthia King at 82 Depot Street. And I remember, I don't remember the person's name that wrote the article, but it was in the Westford Cat, and they were on the DEI committee. And their letter was in regard to the Westford Community Survey, where 62% of the people rejected replacing Columbus Day. And they, I don't know if anybody else remembers reading that, but, so I'm wondering what happened, you know, with that, and if you could comment on that.
I'm not sure what the, I'm not sure actually what your question is. I think, I think we can accept the fact is true, that, that you represented it, and then it's subsequently-
It was done, and 62% rejected it, and a member of your committee wrote upon that, and what happened with that survey that people voted upon, that you didn't consider it, even though one of your members felt, you know, that they needed to write it in the Westford Cat?
So I think this is a question, so I understand your point, there was a survey taken that had a certain result. Ultimately, this went to, to a ballot. That's the complete authoritative take on the town. So there's not a requirement to respect a survey over a town-wide ballot vote. Townwide ballot vote is sort of the gold standard of understanding what the community wants. So, so thank you for that. Gloria, are you?
It's a point of clarification, because there's an inaccuracy on the record.
Okay.
There's a statement made that town DEI did not report back to town meeting. That is inaccurate. At this year's town meeting, with Donna McKenzie, who was in the room, read a statement from town DEI as to their results in response to town meeting's charge. So I felt necessary to correct that record.
Okay, thank you, Gloria. Okay.
Want me to try?
Yes, please.
So I'll move that this board recognize and honor-
Quiet, please.
Okay. I'll move that this board recognize and honor the vote of the town residents on ballot question number three at the May 2023 election.
Second. All in favor?
Well, wait a second, can we have discussion on the motion?
Uh, please, go ahead.
Yeah, so thank you for the motion. I think this is a really difficult vote for me, and I hadn't given my two cents, and so, you know, I certainly agree with my colleagues in that this is direction from the town, and it's be very hard to vote against it. But at the same time, I, as I pointed out earlier, I think town meeting voters were given a poor choice of options, and far be it from me to say you guys didn't do a good job, DEI, right? You're volunteers, we're volunteers, you did the best you can. And, you know, I just wish we could have come up with something that was a little bit more inclusive and, and equitable. So perhaps we use this as a learning experience, and as we go forward, try to consider all the choices. Good, to me, what you've said so far, it doesn't sound like you really took into account comments from the other side of the conversation.
Mr. Chairman, may I respond?
Loudly.
Sure. Go ahead, Justin.
I'll be brief. Thank you, thank you, Chris. And, and by the way, I, we, on behalf of the committee, we appreciate being able to be here, and we also appreciate this process. And, and, like member Barrett, I, I do want to say that the group took this very seriously and looked at, looked at all sides, heard from all sides, and actually looked at other efforts in other communities. This is part of a wave across the country. And so while I, I absolutely appreciate your point, I do want to say on behalf of the committee, that the committee, and particularly the working group, took this extremely seriously and did a lot of research. Certainly, the, the results were mixed. The vote was close, but we did take this very seriously.
Thank you for your comment.
Yeah, John.
Make a motion to amend the previous motion?
What's, procedurally, how does that work?
Well, a motion was made and seconded. A motion was made and seconded.
Well, I'd have a motion to amend.
We'd have to take a vote on the first motion, I think, first, don't we?
No, you, no, actually, technically, he can move to amend, and we vote on the amendment first, and then we vote on the main motion.
Okay, so, so what's, what's your motion? We'll see if that has a second, and then we'll vote on the amendment. Go ahead.
Going forward on the amendment?
I want you to say what the amendment is.
My amendment is to delete the portion that says, um, let's see what it says. Delete the portion that says superseding any mention of Columbus Day. That's the way it reads, isn't it?
Okay, do, do the board members understand that? Can you, can, if you go down a little bit, we can see the question on the sheet. Eric? So the question is, if you go up the other way? The question's at the top?
That's actually, I don't know if that's the full question.
No, so I can read the question out loud, because I have the ballot. So question three on the sample ballot, shall the Westford Select Board declare the second Monday in October as Indigenous Peoples Day, comma, superseding local references to Columbus Day, comma, and recommend that it be observed by the people of Westford, comma, with the appropriate exercises in the schools and otherwise, comma, to acknowledge the history of genocide and discrimination against Indigenous Peoples, comma, and to recognize and celebrate the thriving cultures and continued resistance and resilience of Indigenous Peoples and their tribal nations?
Okay, I make a reglement. My motion is to delete superseding local references to Columbus Day.
Okay, so that's, that's John's motion on an amendment. Is that an amendment which is second, his motion on an amendment? Okay, hearing no second, the motion fails, the amendment, the motion to make an amendment fails. So now we're back to the original motion. It's been moved and seconded. We've had discussion. I'm going to call for a vote unless there's any other questions or comments. Okay, all in favor?
Hi.
Okay, it's four, all opposed? One. Okay, so the vote is four, one. So we have now accepted the wording of the majority-voted ballot question, and I guess the question is, do we, is there any further discussion on the implementation? I think the, the primary implementation items that we've talked about are to change it on the calendar, and then also to direct the DI committee to continue to work with, I don't know, John, I don't know, Scott, if you have any wording that you'd like for this, direct to work, to engage with other community members to look for best ways to represent and celebrate.
I have a thought on that.
Yep.
I think this is a great opportunity for DEI to try to reach out to both groups and look for ways to celebrate both of these.
On that day.
Either on that day, or in other ways throughout the community. I'd like to be creative, if we can do shared celebrations on that day, so everybody can see both sides of this discussion. I think that would be extremely helpful and potentially healing. But I do think that this is very worded towards obliterating references to Columbus Day and Italian-American heritage, and I think that there's enough folks in Westford that have severe concerns about that, and I think that we should do as, as much as we can to try and bring the group together, and I think DEI can, has the, has the skillset to do that, and come back with recommendations on how we can make that work.
Yeah, so, you know, I would say the past two and a half, three years have been learning experiences. I was never taught in high school that there was a mass burger of African-Americans in Tulsa. I was never taught about Juneteenth. I, I read about it myself because of history buff, but never was taught that. As much we, we discussed, we're taught a certain view of all of history, right? And, but we now seem to have gone to a different revisionist view of history that wants to, okay, you know, forget about things before we didn't have to remember. There, there were bad things in the past, let's just gloss over those and pretend they didn't exist, and I, I think that's also a mistake. You know, the Civil War happened, and monuments are there to generals who fought for the wrong side, and rather than forget them, we should be saying they fought for the wrong side, right? So I would just hope that as part of this implementation, we can, I also, I also did not know that we had 11, 10 Americans lynched for no good reason in New Orleans. So both, you know, all of this sort of underbelly of our history has been exposed over time. I, I think, I would like to work with DEI to make this a learning experience for, you know, the town, for all these points of view that, you know, Robert Burns, great Scottish poet, said, lamented man's inhumanity towards man. And much of our history is man's inhumanity towards man, and I'd like to think that we could somehow work to undo some of that with, you know, with the DEI committee. If we really are into inclusion, inclusion breeds diversity, and celebration of diversity, and that breeds equity. So I think we start with, how do we include everybody in this debate?
Make a discussion on a debate. That's, that's my philosophy.
Okay. Well, my take is, we have what we, what we, what we need on this item, so I'm ready to move on with basically the direction to update the, the town calendars, the item, and a further discussion with DEI, and with DEI and the schools about sort of what comes next. Any other comments before we move on to the next agenda item? Okay.
Meaning we're not going to talk about this topic, or was I saying, or talk about the sub-items about implementation?
If you want, we can go back. There were, there were a number of recommended items. One of them was to update the calendar, the other was for the, to work with the schools. We're not going to be responsible for that piece. And then the, the last two were basically in the, in the sort of flavor of continuing to work with the community to find best ways to recognize different traditions.
Might I make a suggestion?
Yep.
We have a select board delegate to DEI, Andrea.
Yes.
Who very kindly volunteered. And so rather than tonight hatches that out, could we have, you know, Andrea, as her liaison, work with DEI and propose what could be done?
and propose what could be done, I think we got reasonable, reasonable people here can agree on a reasonable path forward.
We'd look forward to that, and we would welcome, absolutely.
Okay.
Sounds good.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Andrea, for that. Uh, we have another request from the DEI committee to restructure their membership, uh, from thirteen voting members and three alternates. And, Joe, maybe if you could just make it clear what, uh, how things are now, and the change you'd like to make specifically?
Thank you very much for the previous work and discussion, and related, uh, related to, uh, related to the, uh, number of, uh, members of the DEI committee, and our ability to, um, get quorum at certain times of the year. Uh, and for us, like you, to be able to make certain decisions. Our, our proposal, uh, is, in that spirit, to provide for, as some nonprofits do, provide for a range of members. So in this case, we're suggesting, uh, from nine to thirteen members would be the membership, uh, on the DEI committee. This has been suggested to us a couple of times. And the way that would play out, and, and part of the reason is, we, at this stage, we have thirteen members, uh, that are mandated, we have eight members seated or impaneled. And, but for us to make, uh, quorum, we need seven. And it's, and it's tough in the summer sometimes, plus people have family engagements and, and illnesses and, and health concerns. So to have, um, a little more flexibility would be helpful, uh, and you might be asking yourselves, if you have nine to thirteen members, how do you establish quorum? Uh, and our thought is that quorum would be based on the number of impaneled members. So if we're allowed to have between nine and thirteen, and say we have nine, uh, then the quorum would be five. If we have ten, it would be six, that kind of thing.
So thank you for that, I'm not familiar with that mode, I'm wondering if we maybe just want to consider moving from thirteen to nine with a certain number of alternates. I don't know if other, more experienced members of the committee have seen this, I'm not sure, I've never seen a flexible number on a charter before.
I was going to say, we, we have a time moderator, it, it would, would, would you have, I don't know how, this is.
I have committees that do that.
There are.
Too many members.
Well, I think there are communities that have a fluctuating number in that their quorum is, is what, whatever, just what Joe said, whatever the number of people have had at that time, that's how they.
I'm sorry, re, 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 rather.
Whoa, whoa.
We're, we're not going to have a free-for-all, so Patty, why don't you go first, and then Andrea?
I was just commenting that it wasn't open meeting law, I mean, you have your people. And then if somebody, say you have nine people, then that's, that's what you have. And if somebody can't attend, then one of the alternates comes in, and it's always nine people. So you'd have to have five.
Right.
People there to make a quorum, right?
Yeah, I had a conversation with, with Joe earlier today, and I had never heard of the sliding scale in municipal. It makes it really difficult when you have to say, meeting per meeting, that we have nine members at this meeting, we have thirteen members at this meeting. So I did suggest the nine members and the three alternates, or, or four alternates, however it might play out, but.
I'm going to make a friendly suggestion to you, Joe, but I'm going to listen to my, my great colleague first.
That's not what I meant, what I meant was, if, if you can have up to thirteen, maybe that's a better way of saying it, if you can have up to thirteen members, but at any given point in time, there's only nine members appointed, then your quorum would be five, as opposed to seven.
I don't think.
In my thirteen years, I have never seen.
I don't think it was, I'm not sure how to qualify for open meeting law. Andrea, I, my friendly suggestion is that you do nine, but Andrea.
That, that was, I mean, I, I hear what you're saying, and why you're trying to do that, but I think at this point, if, if we drop the quorum to nine, I mean, I'm sorry, if we drop the membership to nine, then you'll have a quorum of five. And if, over the next several months, you know, people come out and say, I really want to join DEI, and I, you know, I would like to be a part of this committee, well, first of all, it's, it's, it is an open meeting, so anybody can come in and attend your meetings and to watch them, if they're really interested in becoming a member, and, you know, the committee feels like they'd like to expand again, I think then, you know, you just come back to the select board and say, hey, you know, we'd like to expand from nine to twelve, or fourteen, or whatever it is, so. I, I think it just makes it easier, okay, it's simpler.
It's simple, it certainly is simpler, I, I totally appreciate that.
I see you, Kathy, just one second. So are you, um, would you be comfortable with moving to, to nine?
I should have started here, we have six applications for membership to the DEI committee, and so we couldn't accommodate them with a nine-member limit.
You could appoint them as alternates, and then you could come back, as Andrea suggests, if you find that that's too many. But we need to establish a number now, for this purpose. Okay. Kathy, if this is directly related to this, I will.
Yes, Kathy Linton Rushroad. Are there any applicants now, because, um, you just said there are six. So there are applicants, okay. So you, are you saying you're going to let them in, or are you saying you're going to cap it? I, I'd like some clarification on that. Uh, are you going to let all those that want to serve, serve, or are you trying to?
I'd like to, I'd like to, that's why, I'd like to, that's why I offered that up.
Joe, just, so typically, the way this works is there's a charter, Kathy, you noticed, there's a charter for the committee. If we modify tonight, there'll be nine, maybe with five alternates, if that's what Joe's suggestion is. And then the appointing authority is this board. So what would happen is people put in a, an application, it comes here.
They're a joint appointment, of the school committee and us?
School committee as well, so the process is, they would be jointly appointed, so it would go both to a school committee meeting and here. So we welcome, you know, any applications going through the normal process, and they'll be treated in the normal way. Okay.
So for tonight's purposes, I'm going to make a motion that we, um, reduce the, um, membership of the DEI committee from.
Thirteen.
Thirteen down to nine.
Would you like any alternates?
And would you?
And alternates.
I forget, five, five alternates would accommodate if we chose to appoint all the existing.
So five, and five alternates.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? I'm sorry, any discussion? Chris called me last time. Any, any discussion?
I'm sorry, so you, you definitely want five alternates, is that, is that correct? Up to five alternates, yes, is that correct?
Yes, I mean, I think, I think the balance that we're trying to strike here is that there is, there has been, I don't imagine the interest has gone to wane, there's been a lot of interest in joining the committee. And it comes at a time when, when we are having trouble making quorum in the summer, so it was, it was a happy circumstance to have these applicants. But we're at a point, we're in a moment where it's almost like a catch-22, we can't appoint them unless we have a quorum. And so that's why we're, we're dealing with it. So I would be, absolutely, five would be, would be fine, and we can, and we can come back, as you say, to make adjustments.
Yep, so just, just a little history, when we formed DEI, we had thought, you know, X number, whatever that number would be, we had a huge amount of applicants, we said, if you want to serve, we want you to serve.
Right.
And so the history of this committee basically is, how do we accommodate, everybody wants to be included because it's inclusive, right? So, um, if this works out, that nine is, makes the quorum work out well, but a big number of alternates, less people get involved, that's, that's all to the good.
Thank you, Scott.
Okay, any other comments? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Thank you for that, and lastly, for you, Joe, before you get out of the hot seat, uh, consider recommendation from the Diversity Equity Inclusion Committee to appoint Anita Tarnikun Wen as an alternate member for a term expiring June thirtieth, twenty twenty-six.
So I just want to clarify, we do not have a joint meeting with the school committee right now, so if the select board appoints her as an alternate, does that then go back to the school committee for their appointment as well, or? I apologize for not catching this in advance.
It, it, it probably should, um, because it is a joint appointment, I mean, I know she's a, a, a full member right now, and she just wants to go from a full member down to an alternate.
When the committee was originally created, it was empowered and handled by both.
By both, so I think, yes, to answer your question, yes.
So, but to the point, can we make your previous motion without the school committee being involved?
We would send it to them to also vote.
So what if they say no, and then we're?
Then we'll have to have a joint meeting together and settle.
Let's, let's see if we can.
Uh, but I, I, yeah, well, we could do, definitely deal with that problem, Chris.
We can.
Okay.
I just make.
So we, uh, yes, no, go ahead.
So, so Anita would be counted in your five alternates, that you've already done the math to accommodate everybody?
I'm sorry, was that?
So in your, in your mathematics, which gives us the five alternates, Anita was accounted for in that number, right?
Uh, yes, yes, she would be. I'm not sure.
Should we look at me out inadvertently, that's all?
I'm not sure of her current status, however.
She was the select board.
She was the select board liaison, wasn't she?
So she's not available then to be on the committee until this is approved, yes?
Yeah, so she's.
Correct.
Right.
Okay, so would anyone care to make the motion as written here?
So moved.
I'll second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Great, thank you, and so, can we, can you help me coordinate with, uh?
Yes, of course.
Valerie and the school committee?
Yeah, we'll do that tomorrow.
Number five, consider recommendation to clean, okay, thank you, Joe.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Joe. Uh, so next up, we're going to be working with the Clean Energy and Sustainability Committee. Uh, there's a recommendation, uh, to appoint Eileen English as a full member for a term expiring June thirty, twenty twenty-four. Not sure if we have anybody here, or need, need anybody here for that, any questions?
He appeared before the committee, and it was a good interview.
Okay. Okay, very good, thank you, Sean. Do you want to make that motion, John?
Make the motion?
Do you want to make that motion to appoint her?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Great, thank you. Uh, update from Ebby Masaladon, uh, sixty-sixty-eight Boston Road regarding agricultural preservation restriction. Thank you, Ebby, thank you for your patience. So we're, uh, we see a bunch of activity there, and we're excited to hear what your plans are for that site.
Finally, finally, thank you, Ebby Masaladon, good evening. So if I was feeling better, I could have stayed longer. Since April, uh, we have done quite few, uh, upgrades to the facility inside, we ran new line wiring, the water line.
I'm sorry, Ebby, the, this room is not perfect, so we have to unfortunately speak as loud as you can. This unfortunately is not a microphone.
Throw, throw to, I'm sorry.
You do, okay, just please do your best, this is not amplifying anything, this is just a pickup for the, for the broadcast. So if, if one can just listen carefully, if Ebby's got a sore throat, we'll just have to do our best.
And the new electrical system that went in, and, uh, there's more electrical that's going to be done in the next couple of weeks. And inside the facility, it was all boarded up with new boards for the stock, the live animal to go inside to be comfortable. And there's going to be a ramp from the back of the building going up inside the building. And there's a pig pen that was installed, and we have purchased over a thousand yards, oh, thou, I'm sorry, thousand yard, thousand feet of electrical fencing, there's more being purchased within the next few weeks. And those will be installed within the next three to four weeks for the cows. And there'll be a chicken, uh, facility, a chicken coop in the back, APR three, because that's not really a area that can be cultivated. And, uh, that's about it for right now.
Okay, great.
There'll be security lights installed outside, there'll be cameras installed outside. And, uh, do whatever we can do, keep the animals happy.
That's great, and just, just a scope, so you'll have pigs, cattle, chickens?
Chickens, yeah.
Just, how many pigs, how many, do you have any sense?
Probably a couple hundred cows, couple hundred pigs, no, I'm just. Whatever the facility allows, seven, eight, ten cows.
Okay.
About maybe ten, twelve pigs, and chickens will be with more.
Okay. Okay, thanks, why don't we take some questions from the board? Yep.
What's your vision for the end game here? Where, uh, what, if you were going to look forward a year or two years downstream, what would this place, what would the?
I really don't, I can't tell you right now, I don't know if I'm going to be live tomorrow. My vision is to try to, like, keep it as a farm right now, and try to, like, make the best out of it. I've actually contacted the state, too, the state has a vehicle they can bring over there, and for small farms that can't afford, uh, or they don't have the facility to slaughter their own chickens and all that, they have a vehicle they'll bring on site, and they'll slaughter the chicken, and they'll clean it, and they'll hand it to you, and you can do whatever you want to do with it.
That's great, other, John?
So just like, so staffing, I mean, if you've got animals there, clearly you don't need a full-time person, maybe you do need a full-time person.
There'll be a full-time person taking care of the animals, yep. Be also camera, closer, good cameras, and watching the animals, too.
And what's, 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 I mean, I know clearly you've got cattle and pigs, can kind of do a lot of outdoor, but what's, what's, what's right for shelter for?
Inside the shell, inside the building, that we boarded up all the walls, they used to be plaster, now they're all three-quarter inch board to go inside, to be safe from the.
So because it comes, like, as we, a year-round operation?
Right, right. For now.
John, do you have another question?
Yeah, are the cattle going to be free to graze the?
They'll be grazing in the farm, yep, they'll be grazing in the farm.
So that's six acres of two and three, or that's one and two?
The six acres will be grazing area.
Yeah.
And the APR three will be for chickens and for the, for the shelter.
Okay. And electrical fencing? You said electrical fencing?
Electrical fencing, yeah, you have to have electrical fencing, yeah.
What kind of cows? Well, that's important.
Calfs.
Some of them are big, yeah.
They're going to raise them over there, and they're going to send them to the slaughterhouse.
So there's this beef cow?
December, yeah.
Angus, or something like that?
I don't know what's going to be there right now, we're looking to buy them right now.
Okay.
Because there's not enough calves to go around.
Hampshire hogs?
I have no idea. I have my farmer, he's going to be doing all that stuff.
Okay.
So I can find out for you, if you're interested.
You know where to find John if you have more livestock.
Yeah, I guess. Chris, so, to me, the farms like that always generate interest, like, I see the farms that are in Carlisle, and people are always trying to stop and, you know, pet the cows or feed the cows, and you're in a high-traffic area, so.
There's got to be no petting.
Right.
It's not like, uh, Springdale Farm up in one nineteen and all that.
So do you have a plan to, like, dissuade folks from pulling into your establishment and, and trying to do that?
There's got to be a gate over there, of course. Once after the DOTs are also done with the facility, there'll be driveway and all that.
Thank you.
Okay, our, our goal, do you have another question? We can't limit John's questions.
I thought of one that I want to ask.
I'm going to ask what kind of chickens?
Okay.
Angus, you can get Angus.
So I, I know there's ongoing community interest in, in being, uh, in compliance with agricultural restrictions. We really, tonight, just wanted to hear what Ebby's plans were, and we really appreciate that. Uh, if you have a, a short, short question regarding what's going to happen at the site, that would be great, um, okay.
Looking for an ag plan that shows more details.
Say your name.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes, Juliette Mount, Boston Road. So, the ask previously from the select board was, and there's a commitment for having an ag plan, so I'm looking forward to seeing what that is. Putting a bunch of animals on a farm is not a plan.
Uh, so we'll, we'll consult with council and make sure that, that we understand and are communicating with Ebby, any, any daylight between what the agricultural restriction requires and what he's doing. So we'll do that as a second step, but tonight, we just, we hadn't heard from him in a while, and wanted to know what the plan was, so.
Thank you.
Okay. Any, uh, any other, any other questions? Uh, Emily, please.
Emily Teller, nine Texas Road. Um, I understand that Mr. Masaladon and, um, the Agriculture Commission have been in touch with a potential plan, and I'm wondering if there's any action on that as part of this, um, future.
I know there was some dialogue that was kicked off, I don't know if there's anyone here from the Agricultural Commission to, to share what that dialogue has been. Uh, why don't, why don't we include that in the follow-up, Emily? So in addition to just making sure we're all aware of what the requirements are and, and how that works, we'll also check in with the Ag Commission about any dialogue or cooperation.
And I'm a little concerned about a truck coming to slaughter chickens on the property. I understand that the pigs and cow will be probably taken up to Blood's or some slaughterhouse for that, but it just seems a little casual, and I don't know if there's any permitting needed by the Board of Health or anything for slaughtering on that property.
Yeah, it, well, if there is, we'll certainly have to be in compliance with it. Okay, thank you, Emily. Okay, I think, I think we're good, I don't think there's any vote to take there, thank you, Ebby, we appreciate your time.
Have a good night.
Thank you, too, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your patience. Request to execute Carlisle Road order-taking, this is Steve's, Steve's kettle of fish, welcome back, Steve.
Patiently waiting.
Thank you very much, uh, so the engineering department has been working with commercial property owners along Carlisle Road to secure temporary and permanent easements for, uh, phase one of the Carlisle Road sidewalk project, uh, which will go from Littleton Road to the Balsam Circle, uh, development that was recently completed. So this was authorized by town meeting, um, back in, uh, October of twenty twenty, and we're just looking for you to execute those orders of taking so that we can, uh, record those at the registry and, uh, plan for construction beginning the end of the summer.
Any, uh, any questions regarding the orders of taking?
What does this include, which version of the sidewalk plan does this include?
So this includes from Littleton Road to Balsam Circle on the commercial side of, uh, Carlisle Road.
Just the commercial side?
Yes.
Correct.
Yep.
Yeah, we'll be looking to eventually, um, uh, complete crossings to the residential subdivisions, and in phase two, extend down to Applewood Drive.
Any pedestrian safety committee input here?
Only that, uh, the committee is extremely excited to see this moving forward, because it's been, you know, a long time that, uh, Steve and Paul have been working on this, and have done a ton of work, and it's been a really hard effort, and we really appreciate that, that effort, and want to see something get in there as soon as possible.
Absolutely, great, okay, thanks, Chris. Uh, unless there are any other questions, I'll entertain a motion to execute the Carlisle Road order of taking.
So move.
Second.
All in favor? Okay, thank you, thank you, Steve.
So you do have a red folder, um, for signatures when you're ready.
Okay, don't leave anybody, everybody. Excuse me. Update on the Cameron Center HVAC replacement project, welcoming Eric Heidemann.
Hi, everybody, um, we're just getting an update, um, in March of two thousand twenty-three, we ended up releasing an invitation for bids for this project, which unfortunately, we did not receive any bids. So, working with our contractor and our design firm. So working with our contractor and our design firm, we've developed the cost to bring this project back out to bid. Just for sake of transparency, we wanted to bring this back before the board tonight, just to update you. We intend to get this back out to bid sometime next month, and hope to have the potential to go back to town meeting if we need a supplemental funding. Happy to answer any questions. And Jeff Goodman is also in the background too, if we have any technical questions about the project.
I just wanted to add a comment if I may. There are some increased costs with bidding this a second time, so the OPM's time to help us rebid, and the architect and engineer revising the plan slightly to take out some of the items that Public Facilities was able to do on their own. Those changes are short order and are able to be absorbed within the ARPA funds that we did receive.
Good, thank you, thank you, Eric, thank you, Kristen, for the update. Any, any questions or clarifying?
Eric, how would you summarize the changes?
John, I'm actually going to defer to Jeff, he's the expert in this area.
Welcome, Jeff.
Hi, good evening. Yeah, so the biggest change with this bid package as opposed to the one that we released in March, we originally put it out as a mechanical prime bid, which, you know, basically the HVAC technicians would be the prime contractor, and they would sub out all the other work in the building. This time around, we're putting it out as a general contractor prime bid. We, our OPM Alicia Monk sort of garnered some information after the last one, and found that most mechanical contractors didn't want to get involved with things like demoing ceilings and putting ceilings back up and patching walls and stuff of that nature. There was also some code issues that Kristen mentioned a minute ago, that we actually, some of them we took care of it in-house and removed them from the bid. So we're trying to revamp this to make it a little more appealing to potential contractors. And then, you know, one of the other big things is the last time around when we went out, we had two addendums in the bid package. And because we were on such a truncated timetable at the time, we only put those out as a narrative in the bid package. This time around, we're putting them out as full-blown specifications to eliminate any confusion. So those are the real main changes that, you know, this time around in the bid package.
Thanks, Jeff, very clear. Any other questions for, for Jeff, any questions from the public? Okay, thank, this is just informational, I think, right? So we can move on to item nine. The request to appoint one registrar in accordance with Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 51, Section 15, for three-year term expiring March 31, 2026. So we're requesting one from amongst these four candidates, is that right? And the four candidates are Democratic Town Committee recommends John Ricketson, Republican Town Committee recommends Meredith Kelly, Steve Wojcik, Wayne Wagner.
Just to, so actually, just to, for the benefit of those listening, we already have an incumbent who's.
I do, John Ricketson.
Exactly, it's just.
We put this out, we have to do it to both committees, and they offered some choices.
Just want to be clear that we actually.
Right, John has expressed his interest in being reappointed.
Excellent.
I'm very excited that so many people want to be with John, and whatever it is, so.
It's such important work, as we see all the time, but at the recount too.
Yeah.
Great, any other questions about these candidates, or? Again, we're very grateful to have all of these. Is there any other questions?
We're following sort of our usual custom and routine, you know, practice when we have an incumbent who wishes to be reappointed, we usually and routinely reappoint that person. So I will move to appoint John Ricketson as registrar.
Great, thank you, do you have a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor? Great, thank you, thank you, John, and thank you all for your willingness to serve. We're now at the 8:05 item, board reports and updates. Any boards' reports or updates tonight? Okay. Minutes for approval for release regular session, June 13, 2023. Not for release executive session, November 17, December 1, December 3, May 5.
Tom, I have a, I have a question about the executive session minutes, and it's also for Kristen. Those executive session minutes were for the Town Manager Search Committee? I don't think this board can approve them and release them. I think it has to be the Executive Search Committee that does that.
The Executive Search Committee?
Yeah.
So that committee was dissolved.
I know.
My understanding, just from previous work, is when a committee is dissolved, and it's appointed by a select board, that the select board can then approve the minutes. Because the last set of minutes, once a committee is dissolved, they, they can't approve it. So that's my understanding, but I'm certainly willing to get more information if the board's not comfortable with that.
Would you like to get council's read?
I would, sure.
Could we, could we take those?
I'd like to see copies when we get it, they come through?
Yeah, I magnified, emailed them last week.
Okay, so we're voting on the release of the regular session minutes of June 13, and the executive session minutes of May 5, select board only. Do you have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you all. Okay, Town Manager Report, Kristen.
Thank you. So I have three items before we get into our traditional grants, contracts, and purchase orders. So on June 6, the Select Board had a very healthy discussion related to the ARPA requests that came to bear. And there was a healthy discussion related to a townwide strategic plan, a land use master plan, and a community health assessment and community health improvement plan, and how those all melded together. So I just wanted to update the board this evening that I've been working with Chair Clay on providing a memo to the board within the next week about what are the differences of these plans, what are the similarities, what would the town gain from each of these, how would it put us forward? So just wanted to, to update you in person and, and for the public that, that's in process. And Tom has provided a lot of great feedback, I've also worked with Ray Dick, the Director of the Health Department, to help understand the chip and the chile, you just use the, the acronyms at this point in time, so that perhaps the board could come back at a future meeting to discuss those requests, and perhaps vote if you feel that you'd want to move forward with any or all of them at that point in time. So, Tom, I don't know if you want to include any commentary related to that, if there's any questions.
No, thanks, Kristen, we just want to make sure that you're aware that it's in, in process, and you'll be seeing it soon. So it's, it's at the top of our list of the next thing to bring before you. Yes, Chris?
Just a quick comment, not to make your life any more difficult, but I do know that the Healthy Westford Committee is looking to do a survey themselves that perhaps can dovetail, or maybe they can work with the Health Department and get some of the information they need from the Community Health Assessment, but it might be worth just talking with that group and just seeing what their ideas are, so we don't end up duplicating efforts.
That's really helpful, thank you.
Yep, John?
It would help if we would kind of understand, or if they could give us an understanding, what kind of information we really have on the health of Westford now, what these latest surveys have shown and everything else, so we know what we're going to gain by investing in these additional surveys, especially at CHA and CHIP. And sometimes I get the impression that some of that's desired just so we get the accreditation. And I don't know what, what that really buys the community doing that.
So I did.
That's right.
So I did speak with the Health Director, and she's really decoupling the accreditation from the Community Health Improvement Plan and the Community Health Assessment, and she has helped prepare a memo with your questions, so I'm running that by Tom right now, and we'll get that to the board next week.
Yeah, if you have any input on how you'd like to see these presented, please, please let me know, or let Kristen know. In general though, to your point, John, we're, we're trying to say, this is what we already have, here's an example of what commissioned work like we're talking about has looked like in other towns, and so we can identify the difference. You know, what, what we already have, what we're getting we don't already have in some new stuff, for each of these.
What we have in town and what we don't have.
Yeah. Okay.
So we'll move on to the update on the Amoresco investment-grade audit. So there's been a lot of conversation in the community between this board and the Clean Energy Committee and other interested boards and committees. My understanding is that the town did bring on Amoresco as our procurement, as our contractor related to doing an energy audit and then investment-grade audits. I'm still very much coming up to speed on this, as I had not had familiarity with this. I had been, I have been working with Eric Heidemann and Jeff Goodman to identify the areas of the contract that we signed with Amoresco that we have completed to date, so I'm reviewing that. I just wanted to, you know, understand what have we completed today and what is to be moving forward. We'll also be having conversations with Beth Greenblatt, who was the town's consultant, who was an expert in this area, to understand, as we had the conversation at the last meeting, do we really have to propose a series of projects and understand what that debt might be in order to move forward with a project for them to complete the investment-grade audit? Or are we supposed to be receiving something else? So I don't have anything concrete for you this evening, but want to make sure that you're aware that we're working towards this. I'd like to use this as kind of a reset, I know that there was some maybe miscommunication or some other information that was brought when the Cameron Senior Center HVAC project went a little bit different than was anticipated when Amoresco was brought on board for that project, and then a traditional bid was brought on board. So would welcome any other feedback or questions from the board while I'm gathering the information, but just want to make sure that we're trying to reset that and, and move forward to make sure we're receiving the product that we had signed up to receive when we signed that contract.
Yeah, sort of another coming attraction, digging back in, figuring out where we slipped off the rails, and figuring out, do we want to get back on, do we have to bring your concerns? So that'll come before you in either the next meeting or the meeting after, some more detailed update on exactly what's going on.
So just before we leave this, I mean, in looking back at sort of what the contract was, what was promised, what was presented more than a year ago to the Clean Energy and Sustainability Committee, it looks like that representations were made, that there's been a preliminary study that has been done. I don't know if anybody has ever seen that preliminary study, if it actually exists, and if so, I, I'd really like to see it. I'm sure that the Clean Energy and Sustainability Committee would really like to see it as well. And I guess also looking back, my understanding of what we're supposed to be getting is first this preliminary study, and then the investment-grade assessment, which will provide for us, or identify for us, projects that can be done that will ultimately result in energy savings, so that basically they, you know, they pay for themselves, so to speak, and that, you know, and that I would think that we should get a list, or even if we don't get a list, but somehow they're, we are able to then look at those projects and prioritize them and determine what, where do we get the most bang for our buck, so to speak. And I really, I appreciate that you're working on it, that you're using, that you are, you know, taking this time to do a reset, Kristen, but I really think we need to move this along, I mean, it's been more than a year and we've got nothing, and so.
So I would, I wouldn't say we have nothing, so we do have the preliminary audit findings and the preliminary reports. So I don't know when or why that wasn't brought to your board for review, so we do have the items that have been identified, but they don't have any costs associated with them, specific costs. They have, you know, you could replace the lighting at Westford Academy from halogen lights to LED and get a certain percentage of savings. So we will get that information to the board as soon as possible.
Yeah, I, I think you, I, I see the deliverable exactly like you've described it, and rather than sort of dribble it out by piece, my advice to, to Kristen, which we can certainly discuss, is let's talk to the consultant, let's re-ground ourselves, let's decide what we should have in hand at this point, and then come to you with a more organized look at the total way that we're going to get this back on track.
I just want this to keep moving along.
Of course.
And not sort of be further kicked down the road, so to speak.
Yeah, it sort of slipped off the rails for like a year, and I think we all take a bite of that, and so now we're going to get it back on track.
So while we're at it, can we also have that study, as it may be, dovetailed with the school facility study? Because my guess is some things recommended of the energy audit are also recommended on the school, so basically we've got them both in the same basket?
Yep. Kristen?
You know, I just wondered, do we know why it sort of slipped off the rails? Is it because, you know, we had, you know, a lot of staff transition in the last year, do we think? Or is there something else that maybe caused it to lose focus?
I don't think we know exactly what, the dialogue fell down sometime around the Cameron Senior Center sort of debacle on this, and we didn't, we didn't say, okay, that was a mistake to bring them in on that, lesson learned, now we get back on track. It seems like that's the point where the dialogue sort of slipped off track. So, but we'll, sort of an after-action review of why we fell off, that can be part of what we bring to you.
I think it was Cameron Center that stopped it, because we were going to have them do it, and it came in too high.
Yeah.
And that wasn't going to work, so then we separated it out, and we just forgot to get the other started, and we didn't have the time to do that, so.
Yeah, and there were some, some bad feelings there, and I think the communication broke down, and so. We'll, it's a good idea, Chris, to just come back and say, we do projects, big projects all the time, how did this thing slip out of visibility for almost a year, more than a year? That's not good. So we'll, we'll add that in what we're presenting to you. Any other input, and, and any time in the next, you know, two weeks or until we come back to you with this complete package, if there's things you'd like to see, just let me know.
I guess just along those lines, if we can identify why it slipped, maybe a recommendation to stop it from happening again. So is there a specific point person, you know, was it Paul Fox's, you know, sort of, he was the project lead on this, and since he moved on, it sort of lost focus? And, you know, traditionally, I would imagine Jody would have backed him up, but then Jody moved on, so.
I think it was a combination of everything, Cameron, and loss of staff, and, and then we kind of lost track of it as well. So I think you put it up.
I'm just thinking of some ways that we don't, so we prevent it from happening again. So can we assign the task to some specific resource and, you know, hold them accountable for it?
Yeah, let's definitely, we definitely, getting back on track includes identifying exactly who's responsible and make sure we track it. Okay, thanks.
Thank you for that feedback. My last matter as a report this evening is I wanted to update the board and the public on our solid waste and recycling bids. So as you may recall, you authorized the Town Manager's Office to issue bids for a solid waste and recycling contract. Our contracts with Acme Waste for Solid Waste and with Waste Management for Recycling is up on June 30 of 2024. It's traditional to go back out to bid for these services about a year, year and a half in advance, because it takes the town a while to review bids, negotiate a contract, and then takes time for the vendor to gear up in terms of purchasing any vehicles or equipment, routing, any rerouting communications and education to the community. So I wanted to update the board and the public that we did receive two bids from, one from Waste Management, one from Republic Services. Both bids are for a combination of trash and recycling. Both bids note automated collection, so you'll note today we have manual collection, some people have bins in their homes, some people just put their trash bags at the curb. There would be a July 1 of 2024 start date. We know that based upon the markets that we will be seeing an increase in collection fees. I can't speak to that in detail this evening, as we're still under negotiations and review of the bids. And we know we have an uncertain recycling market. So the Budget Task Force actually is taking a, a huge look at that as one component of the, the strategies for dealing with the fiscal 24 budget and, excuse me, fiscal 25 budget and beyond. So as we move forward with this process and work towards a successful bidder, we'll keep the board apprised, but I just wanted to give this very high-level overview. I anticipate coming back at your second meeting in July with some more information, perhaps a draft contract for you to review and requesting execution of that. We also have been including members of the Recycling Commission and the Sustainability Coordinator in these conversations, as we know that it's a multi-pronged matter for residents and a sustainability and recycling question as well.
Any questions on that? We'll have more detail when we actually get the contract in front of us.
Thank you. So on to grants.
Actually, just real quick, I don't know if there's any comments for the public, we've got a lot of folks here that are, been patiently, patiently waiting. Beth, if you do, if you want to come to the mic, Debby, great.
We're on on recycling, but we moved.
We moved, we moved past a bunch of, anything that we covered.
Well, I just had one suggestion, which I found was very helpful, related to the Amoresco IGA, which was, because more than a year had gone by since we had gotten a presentation on the project, I went back and watched the video from when Amoresco, two people from Amoresco, as well as Eric, came to present to CEASC in April of 2022. And it was an extensive status that we got, it was probably a half hour to 40 minutes. I sent all of you people slides from their presentation, and of course, without the half-hour backup, it might not have been clear to everyone, but what I was trying to portray is how much work had been done and how close they were to completing. And like, one of the things that. And like, one of the things that they said in the general update was that the preliminary scope of work is well underway and includes a list of potential ECMs, energy conservation measures, along with potential energy savings, estimated implementation costs, also includes renewable energy, solar PV, and battery storage. And then they went on to show us how they had collected that data in all the different buildings, and we were very enthusiastic at the end of that meeting. We have the recording, if anybody would like to see it, and it really represented for us the way the world was back in April '22. And at that point, they were going to finalize the cost data, and we were going to work towards a set of recommendations for town meeting in June. So a lot of work had been done, and it would be interesting for some of you maybe to watch that video or take a closer look at that slides to see all the work that had been done at that point.
Yeah, thank you. So I did take a look at the slides. Do you, is there a link to the...
I can, I'll send you a link.
If you could just send all of us a link, I think that'll help us get a running start. Thanks, Beth.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, thanks.
All set for moving on?
Yes, please.
Okay, great. So first is grants, and Mike Dunne, he is on the line if necessary, to accept a FEMA assistance to firefighters grant to provide a comprehensive screening physical for all full-time members in compliance with the NFPA, $1582 and the amount of $42,556.36 as requested by the fire department. You will know in the memo from the fire department that there is a 10% match that we are committed to related to that grant.
I'm sorry, go ahead, John.
Question, is this the same thing that we did with the $77,000 that we did in ARPA? We gave them...
No, it's separate.
I mean, it's separate, but is it the same thing? For example, they're going to be, the firefighters are going to be...
Does this offset, you mean? Will we...
Well, is it the same thing? It's not the same money, but is it the same thing? And I think they were doing what?
Something you said?
I believe it's different, but if we can let Mike answer that question.
Yeah, say $250 a firefighter or something like that? That's a lot of firefighters, you know, for a long period of time. So I just wondered if this could be used, either offsets the 77, or do we want to keep the 77 plus this 42?
So, Mike, may you answer John's question?
Yep. Anyway, this is actually separate from the ARPA funding. The stigma was the ARPA funding, which was for the cardiac evaluation of the police, fire, and dispatches. This grant is geared towards a full physical, which is similar to what we get hired as firefighters. And also a component of it is the cancer screening where they ultrasound your vital organs and stuff like that. They do a complete blood workup, including heavy metals for hazardous materials, as well as a full physical reach test, strength test.
Okay, thanks, Mike.
Okay, ready to move on? Okay?
Thank you, Mike. All right, so contracts, we were able to secure a contract for the location between the police department and the abutter. That successful contract was for premier fence, to again install the fencing in the amount of $18,250. We have PJ Albert Newport Construction and Lazaro Paving for Batuminus Concrete Services, unit prices that are in your packet. I'm happy to go over it if necessary. VFIS through Gallery Group, fiscal year '24. So this is insurance for injured on duty for police and fire. This is a little bit different than what you're used to. Traditionally, we would do a standard insurance policy. This, we're looking to do, move to a high deductible insurance policy. We reviewed the data over the past five years, and we're actually, we were paying more through a standard policy than a high deductible policy. So this would be the amount of $67,172. We also surveyed many communities who use this high deductible type of policy, and they have seen success over the course of time as well. The next one is Barbado Construction Company for construction services associated with the Depot Road pump station improvements in the amount of $89,784. Any questions on the contracts before I move on? Great.
That fence, we had, what, $40,000 in the budget for that?
Eric, do you recall what was in the budget for the fence?
I want to say it was about $42,000 to $44,000. So this is one piece of it. The other piece is the tree removal services, which is about $2,000 to $2,500 through the town's contracted vendor.
Okay. Thank you, Eric.
And then purchase orders for VMW for software that enables us to create virtual servers and then to move those servers to hardware in the amount of $23,406 by the Technology Department, and Site One Landscape Supply for PermaGreen Triumph Sprayer Spreader in the amount of $11,469 by the Department of Public Works.
Any questions? Okay, if there are none, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any questions by correspondence? If not, I'll entertain a motion to waive reading of correspondence.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Okay. And wow, we're at the end. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?